Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Hernandez? Leahy?
I'm present.
LeBron Martinez? Lacy?
Make sure to unmute, please.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
So with that, the, there is nothing laid on the table. First one up is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? And then I have three emails that came in for public comments. So first we'll go to the people who are live. If you want to have a public comment, raise your hand or on the side feature. When you go to participants, it'll show up all the names and you can raise your hand there and I'll, I'll call you off. As they come up. So anyone here for public comment? All right, Jennifer Howard is, I see your hand up just for those who may have not done this before, public comment. I'll set a timer. It's a 10 people can speak. We can always suspend the rules if more people want to. Uh, it's a minute and a half, around a minute mark. I will just try and give you the heads up and, and just let you know where you're at. So first, Jennifer Howard, welcome. And I turn it over to you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm Jennifer Howard. I'm representing the Department of Conservation and Recreation, otherwise known as DCR. And my comments pertain to DCR's 120 day notices and waiver requests that was taken up at the December 1st council meeting and discussed at the January 25th DGR committee meeting. And these comments concern DCR's initial requests and some of the statements that were made at the DGR committee meeting that where DCR was not represented. At the January 25th DGR meeting, DCR's acquisition of the 16 acre quarry parcel, which is not subject to the 120 day notice requirement was discussed. And several times the acquisition was inaccurately referred to as a taking, which suggests the use of eminent domain. And I just want to be clear, DCR is not taking the parcel. DCR holds an option to purchase on the property that was granted to us by the Mount Tom Ski Area, now Mount Tom Companies, when it sold the parcel north of the quarry in to DCR in 2002. The option or the right for DCR to purchase the quarry at no additional cost is referenced in the deed to DCR. The value of that option was factored into the purchase price for the land back in 2002, meaning that DCR already paid for the quarry parcel. DCR acquiring the quarry parcel, which is home to a number of rare plants and animal species, is the final step in completing the conservation project that we started back in 2002 to protect Mount Tom and to provide outdoor recreation opportunities for the citizens of Holyoke and the larger region. DCR notified the current owners of its intent to exercise-
You're at a minute, just to let you know. Sorry, didn't mean to stop you, just letting you know.
One minute?
You're at a minute, so you have another-
DCR notified the current quarry owners of its intent to exercise its legal rights under the option and inquire the quarry parcel on December 7th, 2020. With regard to the notices in my remaining time, I just wanted to say that anytime we purchase land in the Commonwealth or required by regulation to notify the city or town of our interest in inquiring the land at least 120 days before we buy the property. And in cases where we'd like to close more quickly, the regulations allow us to request waivers of the, from those, that 120 day notice period, which was the case when we were, when we sent the notices back in October, when we were working to acquire the, the Holyoke Boys and Girls Club property. At the January 2050 GR meeting, questions were raised about whether we followed proper internal procedures.
We're over our, our time because I know there's other people who want to speak.
And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them further. Thank you.
Just for, for starters, if you're going to speak, one, can you give your address, please? And Jennifer, we didn't get your address.
Uh, so DCR 136 Damon Road, North Hampton. Thank you.
And to Jennifer, to, to um help out here, I, I don't want to cut you off. I'm just going by the rules that we have. I would love to file an order to bring you in if, if that would be something that you would like to a committee to go over what you're trying to do. I don't think it's fair to give you just a minute and a half or two minutes to uh, address what you're trying to address. So I'd be more than happy to file a late file for tonight to do that, if, if that would be something you would like. So with that, to move on, is there anyone else to speak for public comment? I'm just going through the list. I see Andrea is, it's, that's the name that pops up. Up right there, you're on mute.
Hi there.
Oh, there you are. So uh, name, address, and then turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, my name is Andrea Quart. I live at 173 Elm Street. I believe it was last city council meeting. Councillor Graney mentioned that um, the fairest-
Just to let people know, we can't refer to councillors by name or, or talk about councillors. So I, I'm just going to make sure we're clear on that. So sorry, you, you can go ahead, Andre, sorry.
It's okay. Um, one city councillor mentioned that the fairest way of approaching the Hen Ordinance situation, because there is a lot of conflict, it seems like, would be through a vote, a citywide vote. And um, because voting is so important in this country and we value it, I think that that is a great idea. And I would really love it if the city councillors or you, Mr. President, would consider um, a citywide vote because it is the best way to um, make this accessible, uh, or, or make this decision accessible for the people. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Oh, wait, hold on. I have a JR on the side here, JR.
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Uh, full name, address, and then turn it over to you.
Yeah, so my name is uh, John Rivera, and I live on uh, 2 Laurel Street, apartment number three, Holyoke, Mass. And I'm here to uh, talk about uh, or just express um, I guess how I feel about like the, the Hen Ordinance and whatnot. Um, I want to thank you all uh, for, you know, uh, obviously adjusting to um, what's going on as, as best as you can. And uh, you know, food security is definitely a big issue in Holyoke. And uh, I agree with uh, Andrea. Um, a call for a citywide vote would uh, be definitely the best interest in uh, I, I believe for Holyoke residents, uh, for them to express how they feel about Hen Ordinance and whatnot, and especially on their views on like food insecurity and whatnot. And um, so yeah, uh, I I whole wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly agree with uh, for letting me express my uh, opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Is there anyone else? Not seeing anyone. I'll just go to the public comment emails that we did receive today. Uh, the first one is from Daphne Board. Uh, hi Jeffrey and Todd. I hope my public comment from 2120 below that was not read into the public record at the date could be summarized and read into the record tonight since the specific item uh, number six on this agenda is now back on the agenda, perhaps with a quick note that it was overlooked uh, before. Happy also to have this entire message included in the comments uh, from before read. A prior email that was missed was, hi councillors, I'm in favor of several item agendas tonight, including 23, 24, and 28, 31, and 35. Reminder, this is from the prior agenda. In the context of the pandemic time that we all have had to deal with, it was really grateful to see that I have the ability to get outside to some of the city's beautiful natural environments. I've noticed that everyone else seems to be doing the same. Trails and reservoirs are packed, especially on nice weather weekends. I am supportive of item 35, where the council would waive the 125, uh, 20 day notification period to align with the timeline for the Department of Conservation and Recreation to exercise the right, first refusal to purchase the old Mount Tom Ski Area parcel. This is uh, simply familiar with the great impact. Let's continue to improve our parks and parkland, known, uh, knowing that the new pandemic habits uh, of getting outside will carry on once it's all over. Similarly, item 23, the proposal to rehab and extends Scott's Tower Park will, will benefit us all. And both projects have broad appeal to the residents of Hoyoke. Daphne Board, 197 Pine Street. Another one that came in uh, was from Jen Mickelson. Hi, my name is Jen Mickelson of 5 Holly Meadow. I am writing to support item 22 on tonight's agenda. Comcast tightening of the reins at most inappropriate time to make profit is unacceptable. The money that they have used to build the infrastructure to public money uh, through the rate base and treat it as a tax. In addition, getting additional federal and state lawmakers on board would be useful in pushing towards the discussion regarding fiber internet in the near future of residents of Hoyoke. This will help to keep Hoyoke on a level playing field uh, for internet access and also assist in keeping it attractive for lower internet energy rates. Thank you for your consideration. The other one is from Paul Pear. He's at 6 Taylor Street, apartment one in Hoyoke. He's our former city solicitor. Dear Hoyoke Council, please accept this letter as a public comment regarding Agenda Item 19C regarding DCR's request to waive a procedural requirement necessary to exercise the right of first refusal to acquire a portion of the former Mount Tom Ski Area previously owned by the Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club. Uh, I was disappointed that the county council did not debate or vote on whether to approve the DCR request at the council's December 1st meeting. Representatives from DCR were present but not granted an opportunity to respond to questions and um, misconceptions expressed by councillors, including one councillor's attempt to clarify the time-saving sensitive nature of DCR's request. As a result, DCR was was foreclosed from exercising the right of the first refusal by the Boys and Girls Club property subsequent to transferring to the local developer on December 30th, 2020, based on the uh, discussion with the local developer at the DGR 25th Subcommittee meeting. Appears that the local developer intended to use the property as a part of the deal to offset the environmental impact and proposed commercial projects uh, on the adjacent quarry site. Appears that the purchase offered by ZCR may have in fact uh, exceeded 100,000 paid by the local developer for the 22 acres of land. The city council should make clear its response of not acting on DCR's request because of the reasons given uh, December 1st are not consistent with the facts presently understood. First is the uh, not the instance of DCR request was not timely or properly presented. It has been uh, clarified that DCR's request was properly addressed by the city council and the clerk. Second, the city did not need to follow typical procedures to uh, dispose of. Unlike the dispose of city-owned property, nothing in the waiver 120 day notice of the local authority to approve. Third, the action by DCR's request would not have expressed that the city uh, to e- expose the city to liability and was suggested at least by one city councillor. The, the city should literally be following the law, prove, uh, proven the waiver provided by the DCR's own regulation. The third party could attempt to overturn the regulations by suing DCR. However, such an action would have been maintained against DCR and not the city and would um, unquestionably fail, particularly considering circumstances for those of the agency nearly timeframe 180 days to acquire the property. Last, this uh, matter should call to attention uh, to know that the city as a whole can be proactive, transparent, and meaningfully engage in a local and state governmental partnership, particularly where um local businesses, political interests are involved. During the last Monday DGR committee hearing, the uh, discussion of the agenda was introduced and introducing email communication from DCR's Assistant General Counsel. It was read that the email, or the chairman read into the email into the record mocking and exaggerating tone, including a portion of expressing the agency attorney's understanding of several council members who are aware of the third-party local development contempt offer uh, at the time of the December 1st meeting.
Mr. President, time?
We're almost there. I'm, I'm just reading a public comment. I-
I know, but it's, it seems like we're way over a minute and a half.
I, I get it. I, I don't know, let's do one reading letters here. I get your understanding. Uh, I'm at the end. There's two sentences. The DCR meeting, January 25th at 11 or 11330, 113 available, and he gives a site. Um, I would urge that the chairman of city council reconsider those comments and the tones expressed of the government partners prior to uh, disposing of item 19C. Sincerely, Paul Pear. Those are the three that I have. Uh, Jeffrey, did you have any more that I may have missed?
You, you have what I saw.
Okay. Uh, next I see a MWT. If I'm saying that correctly.
Yes, uh, Maurice Taylor.
Maurice Taylor, uh, address, please.
46 Mark Canal Street, Hoyoke, Massachusetts.
All right, welcome.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to just speak out and just say, you know, I'm, I'm definitely agreeing with Hoyoke having its own internet access. When you look at like uh, Comcast cap, uh, when you look at the educational issues that's already occurring in, in the city of Hoyoke, it's going to make it worse. Uh, with families who are already struggling to determine whether or not they have internet access and the children going to school, food. I think that's ridiculous. And I think cities, uh, city should do whatever it can within its power to give the residents internet access. Not only that, we're looking at the fact that Hoyoke asked the state for a lot, and we continue to ask state for certain things. I think this is a good way for the city to create its own revenue so that certain issues can also be handled within a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Seeing none? Uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is communications. Uh, the first one is from Crystal Barnes, Acting City Solicitor. New ordinance language?
Receive and send to ordinance.
Motion is receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Two is from the treasurer letter-
Mr. President, can we take two and 24 together? I think they kind of go hand in glove.
Two.
Second.
We'll suspend the rules, take up item two and 24 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those two is a letter we all received uh, from Sandy Smith, which is our city treasurer, who is um, resigning as of February 26, I believe it was. And 24 is filed by me uh, from motions orders, order that the uh, personnel department post the position uh, uh, for treasurer and that the public service committee begin interviews so that the council can appoint the treasurer to fill the on-expire term of Sandy Smith.
Yeah, councillor McGee, could I be added on to that? Usually the chairperson of public services uh, is on that, as a sponsor, co-sponsor.
And councillor Leahy?
And also I'll just let you know, um, you know, as a point of information, we do have a public uh, service meeting coming up Wednesday, February 17.
Good to know.
Motion to receive and send to public service?
Motion is received and send two and 24 to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item three is minutes of January 19th, 2021 meeting.
Motion to be received and adopted.
Second.
Motion to receive, adopt, and minutes. No changes, no requests. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four is from the city clerk, a grant uh, report and extension approval. This is the grant that the clerk received with regards to elections, breaking down the expenditures and then getting an extension for the remaining $5,988.53.
Motion to receive and send to finance?
Motion is received and refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five is from Marcos Moreno, Director of um, Office of uh, Economic Development, Final Grant Reports.
Receive and send to finance?
Second.
Motion is received, refer to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six is a communication from DG and R Committee. Uh, scheduled meeting on January 25th, 2021 regarding decision to refer the procedural of waiving 100 day notice required by required the parcel.
Motion to receive and send to DGR.
Motion is to receive, refer to DG and R. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven is the Community Preservation Committee, uh, proposal to fund the uh, Wisteria Harris repair.
Can you even send to finance?
Councillor Sullivan is, can this go to finance or do you need something tonight or?
Can we take up item 29 with that?
Second.
Uh, 29. Motion is to go out of order and take up seven and 29 as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, 29 is that, is from councillor Sullivan. Order that the city council approve a grant to Wisteria Harris Museum for electrical upgrades in the amount of 55,000. This was unanimously approved by the committee. This is to make up the difference in the shortfall in the previously approved amount. Uh, shortfall was caused by the interruption of the fundraising efforts due to the pandemic. The total project cost is 356,876 dollars, of which 104,500 was approved fiscal year 20. So councillor-
I'm making motion that-
Yeah, councillor Murphy?
I'm making motion that uh, we approve the uh, the grant. I mean, they, they've got, we got to make sure this gets taken care of. But two years ago, we were brought up to serious electrical concerns at the Wisteria Harris, both in terms of danger and also in terms of not being able to use the facility. Hopefully, we're going to get the facility open maybe late summer. So it's very important that we make sure this work get done as quickly as possible. And if we can do it while we're out, while we are closed, I just think it makes sense. And I don't, I don't see how we cannot approve it because without it, we keep having uh, danger to people coming in, danger to workers, uh, and also a facility that is not able to be at full use. So I, I recommend that we adopt it.
Motion, so there's a motion is to receive and adopt the granting of the 55,000. Now with seconded councillor Sullivan, any, anything else to add or you're good?
Uh, everybody's done it for me, so it's, it's explanatory.
All right, so with, with these uh, we will do a roll call. The clerk will call. If you vote yes, you're voting the granting of the 55,002 Wisteria Harris Museum for their electrical issues.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez? Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Twelve PAs.
Put your vote, you're approved. 29 and seven was with it. Eight is the Hoyoke School Department, list of top uh, paid, 100 paid employees.
Receive and refer to finance?
Mr. President? Yeah, councillor Graney.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment on that because this is one of my requests.
Yeah, councillor Graney.
I just want the uh, the, the uh, the council to notice that there are seven positions on this list that are listed as cabinet positions that range from 113,000 dollars to 149,000 dollars. Uh, I think this should go to finance. I think we should get clarification on some of these positions and uh, uh, what, what, what they're involved in, uh, what they involve in, and uh, uh, to get a better reckoning of what's really going on in the school department. Thank you.
All right, so eight is to finance?
Mr. President?
Yeah, councillor Murphy?
Yeah, I, again, I, and I, I'm glad councillor Graney followed this order because it's a uh, it's somewhat mind-boggling to me to look at what someone is, there, there are raises here given out to be 15, 20,000 dollar raises. Many of them are eight, nine, 10,000 dollar raises. Uh, you know, I, I, and I know we, we can't control what goes on in this, but I mean, to me, some of these things are just uh, well beyond what would be considered, uh, you know, you've done a good job and, and, and let's move forward. Uh, uh, but I, I, I'm, I, I just had to make that comment. I looked, I looked at the first few and, I mean, when I know what the city employees are getting in terms of percentage increase and I see what's happening there, I, I mean, we, we need to find some way to say, you know, we want to pay people, right? We want to pay people what they deserve. But it's got to be, it's got to be rational. It's got to be realistic. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, councillor Graney?
Just quickly too, I didn't, did not see the receiver's salary on that list. I'm sure he's one of the top 100 employees. Thank you.
Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, you're muted, Joe, you got muted somehow. Councillor McGivern, there you go.
Who muted me?
Not me.
Uh, no problem, Mr. President. As far as the finance committee goes, we'll be happy to take a look at it. Unfortunately, as we all know, we have no vote whatsoever over these monies. Uh, the school committee has no vote whatsoever over these monies. The mayor, no one has a say over these monies. It's a state department that we've lost control of completely. Now, I, I, like I said, if we want to do this in finance, it's great. I think we should have a discussion. But wouldn't it be a bad, would it be a good idea to do it in a joint committee and invite the school committee in to have the same discussion with us?
Okay.
I'll make that amendment.
I second the motion. Do you admit it?
Well, this is just, just this, just let you know, this is just a list of of the top 100. It's not, I mean, like, the order was to receive it, we received it. Do you want to file a separate order to have them come in or? Because all I'm receiving is a list. Councillor McGivern, I know what you're asking, but-
Hey, I, what was the motion on the floor?
To send it to finance, that's all.
And councillor Graney's comments were to have a discussion about it.
I guess you guys-
Sure, uh, you know, uh, you know, uh, Mr. President, what, uh, you know, what councillor McGivern is saying makes sense. If that's fine with me. I just, I just like to get it out there in public to see what's going on in our school system. And it's about time we started uh, educating the public as to what's going on. That's all.
I understand. I'm just saying, wouldn't we need a separate order to do the discussion the way you guys are asking? Because this is just receiving the top 100. They can have in finance.
Right.
We, you need a separate order. That's all my points.
Maybe we could just have a separate order filed and stop conversation on this.
Right. Now, I think that's what you need. That's my only comment. Councillor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and I, I do agree. I, I miss the receiver's uh, salary on that as well. And you know, some of the people that I'm deeply concerned about are the pair pros, the teachers, you know, uh, the principals, the assistant principals, the staff. And here we are, uh, the top few are making a lot of money. And this is a, a comment that was made before by another councillor. This is a taxation without representation. Uh, school committee, the city council, the mayor, we have zero control over this. And yet they're spending the money that the city of Hoyoke is raising. Is it fair? I'm not sure. But I want to see some sort of accountability. I want to see some, some benchmarks. I want to see where this is going. Um, so I, I look forward. Uh, councillor Graney, if you could add me as a co-sponsor, I'd greatly appreciate that. And let's talk about this. Let's get the people in. Let's get a joint committee going. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Well, I, I filed as a late order, but I can't do it from, from, from my living room here.
I'll do it for you councillor. Uh, councillor Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree. I think it should go to the uh, joint committee and uh, with the, with the school, um, with the school board. And also if, if this is- And also, if, if this is, uh, I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it was an eye-opener for me, I think I'm sure as many people. Is this, is there a way that this could, is this a public record? And can, uh, the average citizen get a hold of this list? Asking that's anybody that they know.
They can get a hold of this list.
How would they do that? How would they do that?
I mean, it's, it's now, we received it, it, it's, it's public record. They could always, you know, contact the clerk's office, get a copy of it.
Okay. Just in case somebody's asking about it in the public, they, they might wanna see the, the list and the amount that people are getting paid. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just one second. Alright, uh, Counselor Bartley, then Counselor Murphy?
Oh, oh, Terry has handed it for me.
Uh, alright, just going down the list. So Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley. Uh, I, again, I agree wherever this goes. I mean, I think it's worth a discussion. Who is more important to the education of our kids than the people that are in the classroom and the people that are directly supporting their education? And they're not getting five, ten, fifteen percent raises. So, I mean, that, it, if this is, uh. Part of how we end up making, getting our schools out of receivership, it doesn't seem to make sense from that aspect. I mean, let's pay, if we're gonna pay somebody, if we're gonna see significant increases, let's make it for the people that are there day-to-day with these kids. Trying to do what they're, trying to make sure every kid gets a fair chance of a good education. I mean, again, the, the, the statistics were just, and the, and the list and the positions. I mean, I'm not saying they don't deserve to get paid a good salary. But it needs to be put in perspective of what we can do. And I, again, wherever it goes, I, I think it'll be a very good discussion and I think we need to have it. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I would just, I don't know if this is a point of order, Todd, or Mister President, or if this is a, uh, uh, I can make into a, a motion, but. You, you know, perhaps we, we could consider, um, making a motion to, um. Refer this to the administrative assistant and perhaps he could, he could post it on, on the city council webpage. Um, the, the, um, the aforementioned list. So I think we had the, the list of the top hundred employees, and I think we had a list of the elected officials. And I think, I think now we have a list from, from H P S. So i- if, if that's reasonable, uh, to the chair. Is that reasonable, do you think?
Yeah, I, I, I think we can post it. Now that we received it, it's gonna go to committee, we can, we can post them.
Yeah, it, and so it took to my friend, uh, the, the large counselor, I know we don't say names anymore, which I'm grateful for that, Mister Chairman, that's, that's good news. So, uh, to my friend, the, uh, large counselor, I, I think he made a great point, uh, as he always does. So, I, I'm gonna make the mo- a motion that we refer the, uh, the H P S schedule, the elected official's schedule. And the top one hundred schedule, the, the, uh, so-called breast name lists. Uh, to the administrative assistant to the city council to have, have him posted on, on the city council page of the city of Hoyok website.
Taking the motion.
Alright, so this one went to finance, but it's now requested that. The list that we have received along with this one be posted by our city admin. All those in favor? And Counselor Graney, Counselor Leahy, I do have a late file, um. Order that from Counselor Graney, Counselor Leahy.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up the late file now.
Okay. So motion to suspend the rules, go out of order to late file B. All those in favor? But it's only two tonight.
I, I, that's why I reacted.
I, I, I know, it's shocking. It could change though, Counselor, it could change. Alright, so here in, in Counselor Graney, Counselor Leahy, you can change it however you want. I'm just typing it out for you. Order from Counselor Graney, Counselor Leahy, uh, that the city council invite in the school, uh, committee slash, uh, department members and receiver. To discuss the top one hundred salaries, raises, metrics for raises and salaries. Uh, and that would go to the joint committee?
Yes, sounds good. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Alright. I listen every now and then, Counselor Graney. To send to the joint committee. All those in favor? Now, we're back to the beginning, which is nine. This is a communication from, uh, University of Massachusetts at Amherst. The final.
Receive and send the charter and rules, second.
Nine is to charter rules. All those in favor?
Alright.
Ten is from. The American Civil Liberties Union Foundation Notice of Obligation Under the S J U Decision in Massachusetts Coalition for the Homeless.
Make a motion to receive and send to public safety?
This is to Crystal Barnes, our.
I just make a friendly memo we sent to ordinance. And can we suspend the rules as the president, just to take, cause I filed this on behalf of, uh. Uh, can we suspend the rules and take thirty up as well with this?
Motion to suspend the rules, go out of order to thirty as well. All those in favor? Taking up ten and thirty as a package. Ten is from, uh, thirty is from Counselor Bartley. Uh, the ordinance committee and the city council consider removal of the M G L Chapter eighty-five, Section seventeen A. From the city of Hoyok list of adopted state statutes. The S G C recently ruled that the law to be unconstitutional. Moreover, the law department is recommending this.
So I, I'd like to make a motion to, um. To send both of these to ordinance, and I'd like to also copy our state delegation on them. Uh, Mister President?
Second.
As they pertain to a, a, a section of the state law.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna make one brief comment.
Alright, so let me just say it and then turn over to you. Ten and thirty to ordinance, copy to the state delegation, Counselor Bartley.
Well, we had a great discussion, um, last week in, and they were all merging to, I can't remember what day, but I know it was public, uh, safety. And, uh, we, cause we had four straight meetings last week, uh, about sixteen hours of airtime. And, uh, we had a, uh, and this, this topic was, was readily discussed and, and we had a great colloquy with the administrative assistant to the state rep. And, and, uh, so what, that's what, what this law pertains to is, is a panhandling ordinance that was on, on the, um, state statutes. Has now been deemed unconstitutional and, and what's happening here is the S J, S, S J C. And the opinion that we all have a copy of now, uh, is Fall River against somebody or something against Fall River. And, um, what the S J C is saying is that, you know, the, if you adopt this, you, 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 you gotta get rid of it. But that doesn't mean you can't have something that's constitutional. So we, 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 we need to review this through the orderly process and ordinance. To ultimately strike it from our, from our ordinance, but Mister President. But we also need to hear from the state delegation as to what they're going to do. Subsequent to this ruling, if anything. I, I mean, I, I, I think this topic is not just. For Hoyok, it's for almost every municipality. So, so that's why I wanna refer it to the state delegation. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no one further, so ten and thirty is to ordinance with a copy to the state delegation. All those in favor?
Mister President?
Yeah, yep.
I thought I had my hand up, but it dropped somehow. Um, I just wanted to see if we could just, um, since not everybody has the documentation in front of them. If you could just read what M G L, um. Uh, I missed it now. What the, what the statute refers to specifically? I mean, clearly it's about homelessness, but which, which aspect? Of the law was struck?
So Notice of, um, Obligation Under S J C Decision, which was the Massachusetts Coalition. For the Homeless at Al versus City of Fall River to cease all enforcement of eighty-five, Section seventeen A. An ordinance of which.
Counselor Bartley, do you, um, have, have it on hand, just like what, what it's referring to exactly?
Yeah, panhandling.
The panhandling?
Through the chair, the Counselor Leahy, panhandling. I mean, I, I can get in three seconds or less, if you want me to read it.
If enforcement effort continues, including through harassment, intimidation, or changing individuals and, uh, charging individuals under the statute. The officers and the municipality will be exposing themselves to liability under, um. Mass Civil Rights Act, uh, in forty-two, U S C eight, uh, eighteen eighty-three. Um, which is protecting the first amendment rights of all residents of the Commonwealth is prepared to bring legal action. So it was, looks like a violation of First Amendment rights.
Thank you.
Alright, so now. We are on to eleven, which is from Thomas J. O'Connor, Animal Control, uh, information on social media, um. Animal calls. So this would go to.
D G R, receivers. Receive and send to D G R?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So we had them in it before.
So to D G and R, all those in favor? Twelve is the C D B G Home Programs Public Hearing and Meeting of the Citizens Advisory Notice, uh, Committee Notice.
We received.
Received. Just receive, all those in favor? Thirteen is the, uh, Canada Provisions, eight, uh, three eighty Dwight Street Annual Special Permit Reporting.
We received.
Motion is to receive, all those in favor?
Mister President?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I fell asleep with the switch. Uh, can we just reconsider twelve? It should, it should go to, um, it should go to D G R. I, I do apologize.
Alright, so twelve is to reconsider, all those in favor? All opposed? Send that to D G and R instead. All those in favor?
Thank you.
All opposed? Thirteen is the Fire Commissioners Minutes for December seventeen.
Motion to receive.
Motion is received, all those in favor?
Yeah, that was fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry, fourteen. I apologize.
I know, we already received.
Alright, we're on to President's report.
Did we do with thirteen?
Yeah, thirteen was done. It was received.
I'm really slipping.
It was the snow. Lot of snow, a lot of shoveling, so we're all trying to catch up here. It was a good day. Especially building forts out front. So let's see, uh, President's report real quick, uh, as we all know, Sandy Smith, our treasurer, is, is going to be leaving us. I know Marcos Marros has, has given his final days. Um, just wanna thank both, both of them from, uh, the council. For all their hard work and everything that they've done for the city. It doesn't go unnoticed. Uh, we truly appreciate everything that they've done and. Wish them well in retirement, and I know Marcos was just taking time off. I'm not so much sure it's, it's a full retirement for him, but for, for both of them, we wish them nothing but the best. Um, Counselor Lacy was able to attend a meeting on behalf of the city council, um, with regards to the M S B A. Of which she followed up with me, uh, saying that the M S B A is looking for certain information to talk about. Uh, one new school or whatever it is that the city is looking to do, and they're still looking for certain information. So I did file an order for that to get to the joint committee, uh, along with Counselor Lacy, and I, I do believe Counselor Murphy is looking to sign on to that as well. I, I got it in late on Friday just before the deadline. So more to come on what the M S B A is looking to do with regards to the school. Um, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna try and get that information into the committee as well as try and get it out as, as it comes in as fast as possible. Um, also wanna thank, uh, Dave Conte, uh, from the Water Department, as well as Kevin Jordan. Uh, for coming on to give us an update with regards to, uh, our water system. A lot of questions were starting to come in as emails or phone calls. They stayed on late. Um, and really went through everything as to what we need. I know Counselor Murphy will give a full report on it. But I wanna thank them for staying on late, giving us those reports in order to better address, uh, what people were thinking about. With regards to our, our water filtration, everything else. So, uh, just truly appreciate what they've done to help out the city there. Uh, with regards to that, uh, those are my updates. Did we miss anything? Anything coming up? Counselor Murphy, then Counselor Lacy?
Mister President?
Uh, Counselor Murphy first.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I just wanna, and two, two things. Uh, number one, I, I attended the Board of Health meeting last night and I just wanna. Uh, pass on some information. I know people are concerned about where they're gonna potentially get vaccines and. Uh, you know, that's still being worked on, but it's my understanding that both of our stop and shops are looking to become vaccine, uh, centers. Uh, and they are, as, as of right now, it appears they're trying to work with Moderna in terms of, uh. The vaccine that they're going to try to have available. I don't think it's finalized yet, but it's certainly being worked on. Uh, Bay State has a facility at Whitney Avenue, which has been able to provide some vaccines for, uh. Hoyok residents seventy-five and older. Uh, it's my understanding right now that may not be, uh, still available. But, uh, it was available for a while and they're, they were talking last night to see if it can become available again. Amazingly, each city Board of Health that asked for them is entitled to get one hundred doses a week. So to handle all the city's population, I would be long gone by then. Uh, and I know. One of, that's one of the reasons that the Board of Health is trying to have other, like, like Stop and Shop or C V S or someone else do it. They've also worked at the Senior Center and the Council on Aging to try to help, uh, senior citizens get. Through the process of applying to, to get a vaccine, to get an appointment. So they've been working on that. Uh, they have looked at it and are still looking, as I understand it, at potentially doing something at the Senior Center. If they can work out the logistics and get more vaccines. Uh, so they, they were all, um, you know, I thought. They were on top of what we need to do and trying to get it done in terms of vaccines. Uh, and one other thing, and I'm gonna just let you know, I, I know that it'll be coming up on D G R and a few things that I've asked for with Hoyok Media. But I, I know I was asked to try to work with the mayor and Hoyok Media and others to try to see about getting our council meetings, uh, interpreted into Spanish. I just want you to know, I, I've met with Scott, I've met with, I've, I've conversed with the mayor, I've conversed with, uh. Nick, and I'm not gonna remember Nick's name, who is the head of the Interpretation Department at the School Department. Uh, I know they've reached out to Comcast and, and Counselor Leahy's wife has been involved in this about potentially the hardware. Uh, the mayor has talked about using the money that we get from, from Comcast to Hoyok Media as. The initial startup for doing this. Uh, so right now, there is a potential and, and we're trying to work to get it finalized. And I can ask Counselor Bartley, I know he told me when I get, when I do get, have more information, we can put it on the next D G R agenda. Uh, and I can potentially, hopefully, give a final report that this is, uh, what is available, this is how it's gonna happen. Uh, and it would not come out of city budget, it would not come out of, uh, other things, uh, other than the money that we get from Comcast in Hoyok Media. So, alright, I wanna thank Scott, who's very respons- very responsible and very responsive to me, and the mayor, who was also very responsive. And, and I wish I could remember Nick's name, but he also has been very responsive. So we try to work it where the cost will be minimal. Uh, the potential for having more constituents, uh, being able to get a full understanding of city council meetings. And, and I thank Counselor Bartley, I thought we had a good meeting and I, he gave me very good incentive to move forward and I, I thank him for that.
Counselor Lacy?
Uh, thank you, I just wanted to note that.
Counselor Graney, you'll, you'll be next. You'll be next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Counselor Lacy?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to note that in addition to Sandy Smith and Marcos Moreo leaving. We also, um, have the Personnel Director, um, giving notice and, um, I'm not sure when he's leaving exactly. Um, and I just wanna note that he's been, um, putting a lot of work into the sort of like. Um, the, the rehash that we've been doing of the salary study and, um, I'm not sure he's going to be around for. Seeing the outcome of that work. I just wanna be able to publicly thank him for, um, all the time and effort he put into, um, moving the numbers along. And, and really, um, bringing in the outside counsel that we needed to create the policy, um, behind it.
Thank you. Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just, uh, briefly to piggyback on what Counselor Murphy had said. I also attended that Board of Health meeting last night, although I could not, uh, have any input because I was on mute. But I did take some notes and, uh, just to further add a couple of things, uh. The, uh, they also mentioned that the state is setting up a, a call center. Uh, for people who do not, are not computer savvy, who are, are, are gonna be able to make arrangements to get their vaccines by phone. And that's in the works as we speak. And two, uh, local, uh, organizations, uh. Have vol- volunteered their assistance if they could. Uh, uh, Sean mentioned that, uh. The Action Ambulance, uh, people would be very happy to help out with the vaccine distribution if they, uh. If they were, you know, uh, uh, if they were needed. And the, uh, nursing program at Hoyok Community College would, uh, also would like to get involved. So these are some local organizations that would help out. So for all our senior citizens out there, help is on the way. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, and that's.
Mister Chairman?
Uh, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. Um, and just to follow up on the counselor's comments relative to the Board of Health. In the meantime, while we have all these moving parts going on and people coming together to help out with the vaccines, our Council on Aging is assisting people to make appointments to receive the vaccine, and for people who can't navigate the website easily, the phone number to call at the Council on Aging is three two two five six two five. Okay, that's your local avenue to get some assistance if you are in the eligible group and trying to get a vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Murphy? Yeah, just one, and one other reminder that they talked about, those people that are disabled and unable to get out, they are also collecting data so that they can be, be able to get to someone and actually bring the vaccine to these people if they are unable to get out, so. Uh, you know, they're, they're trying to look at all the various aspects and trying to get it done, so I, I appreciated their time, and that was something I meant to say, and I forgot. Thanks.
No, no problem, thank you very much. With that, we're on to Reports of Committees. Ordinance fifteen A, the Committee on Ordinance was referred in order in an effort to enhance food access and security to residents during these uncertain times. Now we expedite backyard chicken ordinance as well as review a permitting process for a community garden to ensure that its facilities, easy access and use, and such sites, uh, recommended that the order be adopted.
Receive the committee report, adopt and pass at first reading.
Motion is received, adopt, pass, the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Lisi.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we went back and forth on this, um, a number of times, and, um, we had another really productive meeting in ordinance last Tuesday where we, um, really line by line went through the ordinance to make sure that the different iterations were all, uh, paired up, and that, um, you know, just working through Zoom and with all these documents online and revisions being made, there was, um, some confusion as to where we were at. So it was very important to go through line by line to, um, to take note of where we're at. So, um, with this order, um, we have come up with, um, a, amendments to the zoning ordinance as well as the, um, the uses, um, for, for the, um, uh, accessory, sorry, accessory uses, um, which is where, how they would, um, hens would be allowed via the, the, the zoning ordinance, so. Um, the following residential zones, um, you would be allowed to keep up to, um, six hens, and that's the R one, R one A, R two, DR Downtown Residential, up to six unit dwellings. Um, hens must be kept in hen houses or coops that provide a minimum of three square feet of space for each hen. The coop itself must be enclosed in a run, which is an outdoor enclosed area that provides a minimum of ten squeet, ten fair squeet, sorry, square feet of space per hen. Uh, the coop and run, um, setup must be at least eight feet from any side property, ten feet from any rear line, and fifty feet from any neighboring dwelling, as well as one hundred feet from any surface water source. The hens must be kept in a safe and healthy manner, as described by the Board of Health Regulations that outline the procedures for food storage, waste management, cleaning and sanitizing the coops. Um, roosters are expressly prohibited, and renters who wish to keep hens must demonstrate in writing that they have permission from the property owner. Um, this is all taking place via a special permit of the City Council. Um, it is a, um, a very large compromise that we feel like, uh, we've made here in the community, um, because we believe in incrementalism, and we spent a lot of time really getting into the details of, um, the value that hens have, and, um, there were some, you know, pros and cons that came up along, along the way, but overwhelmingly, the, um, public hearings were overwhelmingly in support of, um, moving forward on, uh, the keeping of, of hens on, uh, residential, um, properties, and so we wanted to move forward on something, even if it is highly restrictive um, at this moment in time, because it's more important, many of us feel, to, um, begin to allow um, hens in residential areas and see, um, you know, how does it go? What, what are, um, the problems, if any, um, that come up? Um, I, we've noted in the past that, uh, the special permit of the City Council allows for a high degree of control um, by the City Council, so every time anyone wants to consider having hens in their backyard, they have to go through the special permit process, which includes, um, applying for the special permit, which is a hundred dollar fee to begin with. Um, advertising for two weeks, um, per the Mass General Law for public special, uh, public hearings. Um, it will cost another one to two hundred dollars, and then, um, there will be a recording fee if the special permit is granted, um, which would be another hundred dollars, so we're talking between, um, three and five hundred dollars here, um, to just, uh, you know, to begin to enter the process without any sort of like guarantees that you can move forward into the, um, process of holding, uh, hens on your, on your property. Um, but again, uh, many members of the committee felt that, um, we, we really believe that in order to move forward in a productive way, um, this is the, the compromise that needs to happen, and council, um, you know, by creating the special permit of the City Council, the, the council's opportunity to deny permits will come um, down the road on a case by case basis, and so I'm going to urge all my fellow counselors, um, this evening approve the ordinance that we crafted, um, because if you choose to say no, that opportunity is afforded to the council um, through the special permit process, and right now, um, we are, you know, creating a process and, and moving forward on, um, allowing hens with a special permit that is, again, very tightly controlled by this body, and so um, I will urge you all to, to vote in favor of moving forward. Happy to answer any questions that come up as to other details.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, do you have a copy of the legal form of this ordinance change?
Uh, I, I do.
Do we not get new copies of legal forms that we have to vote on?
Did you not get a copy?
I hope we have, the final form.
Got a copy.
I don't. They were uploaded into the drive.
I just looked at the drive and it's not there.
I couldn't find it.
I haven't received one either.
Um, it was uploaded to the drive, I could get the date in a second, but it's in a sub, it's in a, um, subfolder of the drive, so if you go to Meeting Materials, and then in Meeting Materials, you go to.
I can get an email copy.
Right, I mean, I think in some ways this body should figure out which system they want to use, but the documentation i- is there.
Counselor McGivern, you.
When, when did the, uh, solicitor sign this, Mr. President?
I believe it's the twenty-ninth, but Todd might have the, the physical copy in front of him.
What I have in front of me, Counselor McGivern, is the updated information as it was read, but it has not been signed by Crystal.
Make a motion to lay this on the table.
Second.
Motion is to lay on the table, can't debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
No. Why wasn't it signed? Could we actually get, um?
Well, hold on, hold on, first was to lay on the table. Um, I've heard a few no's, so I need a show of hands for laying on the table to be. So if you're voting to lay on the table, raise your hand, so I can count. One, two, three, four, five.
Grainy six.
Grainy six.
Grainy six.
Alright, so I count six, so laying on the table as of right now fails, need seven. Um, motion was to suspend the rules to ask a question to legal. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Crystal, are you there?
Yeah, I mean, those, I signed both the zoning and the regular ordinance, they were put in the clerk's box last week, I mean.
Okay, I, I just telling you what I have in front of me. Now, if there's a signed copy and you're saying it, then that's what I have to go by. I'm only going by what's in front of me.
Can we ask what the date of the signing was?
If we, if we had the signed copy, it would be with the agenda stuff, so. Anything we get gets attached to the committee reports.
So what does Todd have then?
He has whatever we had in the office.
I mean, it may be lost in transmission at this point, but they were sent over last week.
Yeah, I have the back page, it's, it's not signed, just, uh.
Do you have the zoning one as well?
The ones that are online are both not signed, but, um.
I have Agenda Item twelve C. And then I have draft in year one, uh, in year two thousand and twenty, and then one is written in by pen. And then from there, it goes on to, in year two thousand twenty-one, this is typed up with the recommendations that were read, with the changes. There was one with regards to hens and definitions, striking out a hundred and putting in three hundred. There was a typo there, it says property within one hundred, it slashed out three hundred, so I actually changed the three, uh, the one to three, because that was a typo.
No, you should have a fully clean copy after all the changes were accepted.
That's, that's what I have attached to the order. J- I'm just telling you what I have.
Oh, that's fine.
Mr. President?
Mr. President? But, oh, hold on, hold on, Counselor Murphy was next, and then I'll go to Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, two things, uh, yeah, it has been confusing in terms of trying to get, and I'm not trying to blame Crystal by any means, uh, because we've been back and forth on this, and, and let me just say a few things on a positive start. Uh, I mean, we have gone through this, and, uh, we are now fully to a special permit and with a requirement to pay the fee, so that, that is something that we need to do, and I think we did it. Uh, we also made sure that a butters for the special permit are three hundred feet and not one hundred feet as was listed, and, and I still have it handwritten to three hundred rather than a, a typed copy. Uh, we also changed, uh, that renters, ha- original, uh, ordinance was that renters, uh, must have a lease, and that, and they couldn't be tenants at will, and, uh, you know, it was my view that a number of people, especially in the lower wards, are very well tenants at will, and if we don't make that amendment, we would be prohibiting them from, from doing it. Let me also say, a- and this is something that I, and, and, and if we were to take it up tonight, I would make a recommendation to amend, uh, the, the side, Chick- Chickaby has a side and a rear uh, spacing or, or, uh, I'm not coming up with the proper words, but you have to be at least, and Chickaby fifteen feet away from side setback, fif- fifteen setback and a side and rear, and I would, uh, encourage us, I know we're looking at eight, and I, and eight feet is just so small to be having, uh, animals right next to you twenty-four hours a day if you're in that yard, so I would, I would recommend if the council, if and when the council takes this back up, uh, that the council would amend uh, the side setback and the rear setback to be the same as Chickaby, which would be fifteen feet, which I think is a little bit more realistic. Part of that is because we are making a change, and I think it's better to make a change in being stricter, and if everything works out, we can amend it to be easier than to make it easier and then find out we have to become stricter, that, that just seems to me to be the wrong way to go. The, the committee's done a lot of work, uh, Counselor Lisi has, has certainly dedicated herself to doing this. I mean, we've made a lot of progress, those are, those are the last things that I would be looking for, but again, we need to have an actual ordinance, an official ordinance in front of us, and when this is all said and done, if you want to lay it on the table, I would then vote for it.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to request through you to our administrative assistant that, that whenever there is final legal form that will be presented in between a committee recommendation and the City Council meeting, that it be emailed directly to each counselor. It is not transparent, nor is it easy to find forms buried in these drives. And I think we need to make it easier and more transparent to do the business of the city. I look forward to when we are in chambers again, but in the meantime, we need to see this and be able to review it prior to the night of the meeting. Thank you.
Counselor Graney.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I want to do this in a very professional and respectable way, but I thought that I saw six hands, plus my vote was, uh, seven on the issuing table. So, and I didn't call for a roll call because I wasn't sure, but I don't know how we would go about that, but I thought there were seven, I thought there were seven yays for the roll call and six nays. Thank you.
I, I counted five, counted yours as six, and questioned it, and no one said anything, so that's where that one went. Counselor Bartley.
Oh, 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 thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President, let me, let me screw this up again, hold on. Okay, uh, y- yeah, just, I, I, I just want to point out to the, um, through the ch- uh, chair to the Law Department, under number two hens definitions, a butters, it reads here, a butters shall mean owners of a budding land or property within, within one hundred, and then parentheses, parentheses, it says three hundred feet. So, the language is what prevails in, in a, in a ordinance, not the parentheses, so I, I would, you know, we're not making amendments now, I understand that, Mr. President, but I, I just want to point that out to, to the Law Department and to the Ordinance Committee, that the language, it says one hundred feet, that's what I, that's what I have in front of me. It doesn't, it's in a parenthesis, it says a number three hundred, but the, the, the law, the law would be, as, as my brother attorney knows, the law would be what's, what's handwritten, what's typed out, the, the words, not the.
Correct, you don't have the correct version in front of you, we're aware. You, apparently somehow the final version has not made it to the clerk's office for tonight's meeting.
I, I gotta be honest, I just got an email from, uh, the administrative assistant seven minutes ago with this language.
I'm looking at the language dated one twenty-seven on my computer, it is correct, three hundred, three hundred in the parentheses, what you have is not accurate.
Great, but I got that seven minutes ago from administrative assistant, so, thank you.
Alright, Counselor Lisi.
Um, you know, I, I'm happy to table this for the, the next meeting, if that's what it takes. Um, I do want to just, um, note for discussion purposes that, um, you know, the reason why, um, we wanted to create, um, actually even, what I want to say, um, the less prohibitive setbacks, so like the lower setbacks, is because through the special permit process, you can always create greater setbacks. You can't create more, um, liberals, so we wanted to create the opportunity for, um, in perhaps dense neighborhoods, uh, you know, the, the coops to still go up um, at the eight feet of the sideline as opposed to ten feet. Um, and again, if we are in particular neighborhoods where we could go to ten feet, that could be a condition of the special permit. Um, and then finally, um, these setbacks are actually more restrictive than what the rest of the, um, accessory use chart allows for, so the accessory choose, uh, accessory use chart allows for five feet from the side, eight feet from the rear, and, um, uh, I forget the, the third one, I'm sorry, I just don't have it in front of me, but we, we have even gone further, so if you had to put up a garage or shed on your property, you would have, um, less restrictive setbacks than where we are here. And I understand that Chickopy, as another city, does things a little bit differently and has a little bit more of a restriction on them, but those restrictions could always be created through the special permit process as a condition, and I think we want to keep things as, um, consistent um, a- a- and available as possible to the different types of neighborhoods that we would encounter in our city. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, the reason I, I asked for legal form, and I, I think it's something that is very difficult to do, because I, I commend our solicitor, I, I don't know how she does it sometimes, I, I commend the work of the Ordinance Committee on this, this item, that was, and is, um, very much, uh, in, you know, intended. I I commend the work of the ordinance committee on this this item that was in and is um very much uh, you know, intended and been being promoted by a a number of residents within the city. And I and I think the committee will tell you, I spent every minute that they discussed this, not just the public hearings, but the discussions afterwards. Um, we, it's not just a rule, it's a law. When we vote on the final product, we have to vote on the final ordinance, and the legal form is what we need to have. Legal form is the exact wording of what we're voting on. You know, when it's when it's a simple law, it's not that hard. When you want to amend, you know, a a number on the floor, it's something you can do. But when it's a when it's a complex law like this, with a number of moving parts, and there have been a number of moving parts, as Counselor Murphy pointed out. We need to have that final legal form in front of us prior to our vote so that we can look it over and make sure everything we agreed to, we heard or disagree with, is there the way it came out of committee? To amend something like this on the floor, I s- I encourage that we don't do it. Because if you amend a legal form, you then have to refer to the solicitor to put it into legal form for the next meeting. If you if you don't get it right coming out of committee, it just prolongs this. The city council has the right to do this. But the city council, and I think all of us understand the importance of our final vote, needs to be on the final product.
So with that, what is the Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, one one, just in relation to what Counselor McGivern says. So with the idea of the amendment that I was would have proposed if we were taking this up. Am I hearing correctly that uh if it comes out from the law department with the committee's recommendation as it is now, which is eight feet and ten feet side and and rear, uh, that I would not be in a position to amend it on the floor?
May I, Mister President?
You could amend it. I think what Counselor McGivern is saying is that, you know, in legal form, you're supposed to have the final product to vote on. Can you amend stuff? Yes, we have the ability to amend stuff, but now you have to send it back to legal to have it amended to then have a final product.
Okay.
Are you really doing that on the floor? And the answer is technically, no, you're not.
Okay, but we could amend it on the floor, but then send it, we would have to go back to legal to be that amendment to be included in the final.
It would have to go through ordinance back to legal.
Well, well, I think that's the real proper procedure is you would send it back to ordinance, have the amendments done, bring out, bring out a final version.
But.
That's kind of the proper way of doing it.
But.
Counselor, Counselor Murphy has the floor.
Let me just finish my point. I mean, we've tried to amend amend this in committee, and it it loses in committee three to two. Uh, my my instinct tells me it probably could pass on the full city council. So a- again, I I that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight just to, but whatever the procedure is, uh, you know, I I do think. And again, I think we need to be more restrictive to start with than less restrictive. Uh, so I disagree. And it is, you know, we're not just building a structure, we're building a structure that's going to have six hens in it, which is a little different than having a garage. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mister President. Um, since the motion to table has failed, I make a motion to send it back to committee so we can look at final form. We can debate whatever amendments people want to make. Thank you.
Motion. Hold on, motion was to go back to committee. That was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Maybe show of hands, Mister President?
Show of hands. If you're voting to go back to committee, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I see seven on the screen. Grainy eight. So we go back to committee. Fifteen B, the committee on ordinance was referred in order section eighty-six dash ninety-seven of the city parking ordinance be struck from the city parking ordinances, uh, all-night parking. Uh, no person shall allow permit or suffer any vehicle registration in his name other than the one acting in an emergency to be parked on the street in the downtown area between two AM and seven AM on any day recommended that be adopted.
Motion to receive and adopt, pass the first reading.
Sorry.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion, Counsel.
Uh, thank you. So um, this was something that was dug up from the archives. Um, at some point in time, we were creating restrictions for overnight parking at the um parking lot that was dedicated across from the library. And that's at that time, council found that this was on the books and it didn't seem to be um, didn't make, didn't make sense much anymore. And so we um, uh, filed an order to delete um the prohibition of overnight parking in the downtown area between the hours of two AM and seven AM. There was a question as to whether this was needed by the DPW or anyone who might be doing cleaning or street sweeping. And DPW came in and assured us that um it is not necessary, um, that people are parking downtown between those hours. Uh, the parking off-street, on-street parking is um, you know, necessary and and valuable. And so um, the DPW director superintendent had no problem with us um striking this. And it does seem to make sense at this point in time that it be struck from the city ordinances.
Yeah, I I have a question for Crystal. Is there supposed to be a legal form for this one?
I think the the legal form is in the um. Uh, order itself.
No, I just want to make sure because there's nothing attached, but I'm just making sure.
Honestly, I mean, this one was done forever ago because as she stated, the legal form is right there in the order. It was a simple deleting that section, signed and delivered. I don't.
The just making sure, seeing what we learned, you know, just want to make sure. That's all. So fifteen B, uh, that was the report. We're good on the legal side. Any further comments for this one? No, motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the deleting of this section.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Toman?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Ten yeas, two nays.
Your vote, you approve the deletion of that section. Fifteen C, committee on ordinance was referred in order that the ordinance committee consider an ordinance which would create a fee for any driver handing out anything from the car window when a traffic lane as a traffic safety violation. Have considered the same requirement that the order be adopted.
Uh, motion that's this be sent back to committee, given that we have um a couple of opinions to consider alongside of this that was sent to committee.
I'll second that.
So motion is to send fifteen C back to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Goes back to committee. Fifteen D, committee on ordinance was referred in order of the mayor, the auditor, the city financial team, as needed, provide draft internal controls on how the city grants are to be administered so that future governments, city taxpayers are not faced with pain for administrative shortfalls. Recommend that be adopted.
Motion to receive the committee report and adopt. Do we have legal form on this, by the way?
This one we do.
And is it signed?
It is signed, but I do have notes written on it, but it is signed. It says adding at the end of the paragraph, any city department striking out anyone obtaining a grant excepted uh accepted by the city council, striking out shall uh must, then put in shall, fall procedure as laid out in the city auditor in the grant procedure guide. Um, and then written in pen as developed by the city auditor, which may be amended from time to time.
So that doesn't sound like a final legal form to me.
So this one you want to lay on the table?
I would lay it on the table.
Motion is to lay fifteen D on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Fifteen E, committee on ordinance was referred uh orders own change application BL to BH uh for oil, gas, electric, for alignment of municipal business operations at ninety-one Walnut Street. Recommended that be given leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Receive the committee report and adopt.
Second.
Motion is receive, adopt to give without uh give leave to withdraw without prejudice. Counselor Lisi.
Uh, this was an application for um, uh, a poll, I believe, or no, it was a zone change. But then the uh, the genie decided that they didn't want to pursue it, and they asked that it be given leave to withdraw. And in committee, we decided to just attach the without prejudice to it in case they um decided to pursue it in the future.
Okay, so motion is to receive and adopt that we give leave to withdraw without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Finance. Uh, sixteen A, committee on finance was referred in order that in accordance with master and a lot, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the stained glass window phase three in the amount of fifty thousand. Motion would be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President. Now, the finance committee met, we had uh our city engineer Bob Parent and who, I can't say enough uh wonderful things about the way he presents and the way he uh informs us as to uh anything that he is working on. And uh, he's been working with the stained glass project for some time now. This is a NASA historical grant, as you said, fifty thousand dollars. It goes hand in hand with a CPA funding, which is, I believe, and Counselor Sullivan can correct me, around eighty thousand dollars. Uh, with the acceptance of this grant, and this is would be what he called uh phase three. This would complete the high street side of the stained glass windows uh in city hall. The refurbishing of them, they've been taken out one by one in the uh replacement of them, you know, with uh, with all the uh, the new new uh protections uh that are necessary to protect these windows. It also would lead into one removal of one stained glass window on the parking side, the east side, on the parking uh lot side. And uh, which would put us down the road for uh a project that has been going on for a number of years now. But certainly something I think everyone that appreciates city hall and appreciates the uh, the beauty of these windows is in favor of. Therefore, the finance committee on a five-oh vote recommends that we do accept this grant, that we allow the uh expenditures and and all the accounting of said grants to take place.
See, no further discussion. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the uh grant.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Grady?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Toman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Twelve yeas.
Your vote, you approve that. Sixteen B, the committee on finances was uh referred in order in accordance with master and a lot, section fifty-four or chapter fifty-four or section fifty-three A, the council hereby accept the green in the gateway city municipal assistance uh grant of twenty thousand dollars.
Motion received, pass the first reading for the purpose of that.
Receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mister President. We had uh our conservation director before us, Yoni Glagor. Uh, he did a fantastic job of outlining this grant. As a matter of fact, he did one of the the best outlining of a of a grant proposal I've seen in uh many years, and then not not being critical of anyone else, but just he was sterile to a point where we hardly had to ask any questions. Uh, twenty thousand dollars does have a match to it. Uh, it's an in-kind match to satisfy the out of five thousand two hundred and ten dollars, which we found in with this at the meeting was also our superintendent of DPW along with Bob Parent, and that's found within their budget uh itself. Uh, this goes hand in hand with the tree projects that have been going on for a number of years, but this is stump removal. And an idea is is also soil remediation. Uh, an idea is that we need more good locations to put trees in. There's a lot of grant money out there that brings the, or gives the city the opportunity to bring new trees in and to plant them, but you got to have a good spot to plant them. Uh, many of our our trees that have been removed because of for different reasons, they fell down. They had uh disease or they were, you know, grew to a size where they were causing problems. Stumps have been left in the ground, and also that causes a soil problem itself. So Yoni and uh uh Mike McCann, McCannis was with McCannis, was with us. They uh went over this project thoroughly, uh makes a lot of sense, and it will keep the uh, the new planting of trees going. So the committee recommends on a four to zero to uh, four to zero to uh to adopt the uh grant and to set up the necessary accounting and uh allow the grant to be spent.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I I just want to, I think this is a great grant that the the both getting rid of the stumps, but also planting trees. And I think their goal is to plant another four hundred trees if possible. Obviously, I don't think they're going to get that much. But also specifically making sure that we plant trees without uh deforming uh sidewalks so that they're ADA compliant. And I think those are things that we need to make sure we stay aware of. I know the city engineer has been aware for a while. And and I I agree with Counselor McGivern. I thought the presentation was excellent. And and the end result is hopefully the air quality is going to be better in in especially in the lower wards. Thanks.
Anyone further? See no hands. Motion is, oh, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm I'm just, sorry, Mister President. I'm I'm just. It must be the snow. I'm I'm not with it today, but uh, um, yeah, this is this is a really um, really important order. And and the uh, and so we're we're grateful. There there is a match, um, as we know, and we generally don't like matches. But i- in this case, it's basically in-kind match from the um, some of the work that the the city is going to be doing. The conservation uh director, the DPW superintendent, city forester will be putting in some time to this, which, you know, they they would kind of do anyhow. So so the the grant is pretty reasonable for for only, and 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 I hope there's more of these come along to us. As I said to the conservation director that night, uh, this is one of the, you know, top three or four things that we normally get uh on on phone calls uh about uh dead trees and and dead stumps and 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 all the rest of that. And and there's there's a lot of, you know, beautiful streets in the city that are that are tree lined, or they could be. Uh, but for um, you know, huge stumps that have uh just sort of taken over the um, the tree belt. And 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 we know that that not all the city is going to get covered from this. A- as the chairman pointed out, it's it's uh basically uh from Beach, North Hampton, going uh Beach Street, North Hampton Streets, going uh east uh back down to the Connecticut River. And 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 that's okay, and 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 because those are, those are all important areas. And and it's it's my hope and expectation that that um residents will will hear us tonight, Mister President, and they will um, you know, they'll reach out uh to 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 us and or to the conservation director with with recommendations about wh- which which stumps to 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 remove. I mean, I mean, we're we're talking, you know, forty. So it's not like you can, it's not like we're going to get rid of the whole thing, but you 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 got to start somewhere. And 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 I I think this is, this is a really uh positive start uh for for the city, and I I fully support this. Thank you.
All right, um, let's see here. Anyone else? Counselor Toman.
Yeah, thank you, Mister President. Very briefly, uh, Yanni did a great job on this uh, this grant. And uh, I really uh, really pleased to see that we're going to be putting some trees in in this area of the city because it's it's definitely needed and 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 the big plus is getting rid of some of the stumps. You know, whether it's five or ten or whatever, um, really is unsightly uh sight on the city street. So um, really want to hand it to Yanni for for putting this forward, and hopefully in the future, we'll get some more of these grants. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? See no emotion is to pass. Oh, Counselor Leahy.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, for years, the city has been very good. Um, uh, you know, at times uh taking down trees. However, they've always seemed to leave the stumps. This has been happening for twenty-something years. So this is an exciting grant about we can get rid of some of these slightly raw stumps. Thank you.
Thank you. So motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is to pass the second reading. The clerk will call. Motion is to pass the second reading, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the twenty thousand dollar grant.
Anderson Burgos?
Absolutely.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron, Lucy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Indiana's vote.
Your vote, your approve that one sixteen C, the committee on finance was referred in order that the city council accept the amendment to the grant contract already approved by the council of conservation preservation committee to extend the funding deadline for the Victory Theater, recommend that be adopted.
Motion receive and adopt?
Motion receive adopt, under discussion?
Uh, quick report, Mr. President, the uh, we had a a very lengthy meeting. Really felt uh bad that Don Sanders was one of the uh, the final.
I'm sorry, I just, there's, there's some distraction happening, so people need to go get muted.
Can we mute everyone, Jeffrey? Thank you, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, but Don Sanders was with us for a very long finance committee meeting. And at the end, I actually spoke to him uh on Saturday about that too. And he had, he said he just had a very enjoyable time listening to the uh wheels of the uh city go round and round. But when it came to his item, I'll just remind everybody, what we have is is from the CPA committee a grant proposal that was in phase one that we adopted, I believe unanimously for one hundred thousand dollars. And this is to be put into the Victory, very specifically Victory Theater project for some light fixtures. Um, light fixtures that I cannot begin to explain, but Don explained to us in thorough detail, you know, the significance of what these light fixtures mean to the Victory Theater and to the project itself. Uh, cor- of course, uh, Don was able to answer a number of questions by the committee pertaining to the Victory Theater, reminding us that MIPA is in existence, not because of the Victory Theater, but took on this project when the city uh gave the uh, the ownership of the project, handed it over to MIPA after the city inherited inherited through tax title. Um, the city has spent very little money on the project, we did help shore up the roof uh some time ago. And uh, we do have some uh, some commitments, but nothing has been spent yet. Don did tell us that of a forty-six million dollar proposed project, thirty-eight million dollars would be for construction. Here at about thirty-one million dollars now. They realized that the commitment from uh private sector locally, you know, maybe at its peak. But there is some hope on monies that are being um, kind of uh through the CARES Act through COVID. Monies that possibly may be coming down from the federal government. As always, Don is very optimistic about the project. So the CPA is asking because the this money cannot be spent until the entire project project finds its funding that we grant an extension because it's re- it's reached its max in terms of not being spent. So on the extension, the finance committee agrees that as we agreed with this hundred thousand dollars in phase one, that we allow an extended period of time for the Victory Theater project to to uh continue to look for the the uh small gap of monies that they are looking for to uh, to to complete their funding cycle and to get the project going. Uh, if that does not happen for any reason, if the money is not spent on those light fixtures as specifically and very detailed designed into the uh proposal itself, the hundred thousand dollars will go back to the CPA for use in another project, committee voted voted on on uh adopting this and referring it to the city council for your, our consideration.
Mr. President?
Yeah, thank you.
Hold on, Counselor Gray, Counselor Leahy first.
Uh, yeah, so thank you, uh, I did vote for this in committee, however, I had some um very poignant questions, uh, I do thank Don and Kathy for coming in, however, you know, uh, being a city council for twenty-two years and I'm not sure um if I've seen um, if I've been presented with a lot of success they've had um in writing. So what I am going to do is I'm gonna file an order and have they come in, and I'd like to see some hard numbers, I'd like to see exactly uh what they have, they they said they have thirty-five million and and I totally believe them, I'd just like to see, I'd like to see what's happening in the progress of this. Because as a lover of the arts, um, it, you know, God rest his soul, Hal Holbrook died today. And uh, he was in Hoyoke, he uh, he played Mark Twain, and he uh, he was in the Hoyoke several times. Uh, art is very important, and this this theater would be fantastic, but I just wanna make sure that uh it's tangible. Um, so I'm gonna vote for this, but what I am concerned about is this is going to be tied up, this hundred thousand dollars is money that other groups can be using, utilizing, thank you.
Counselor Bartley, then Counselor Graney.
Yeah, thank you, I I I voted against this in committee. Um, just just some uh, the the finance chair did summarize everything perfectly, the the way the meeting went, uh, I I have no dispute with with anything that was said. Um, I I and and I I will co-file if Counselor Leahy wants me to co-file that order with him, and I I if I'd I'd be honored to join Counselor Leahy, if we we've been every order we file, Jim, it it turns out to be pretty positive, so I I I hope this will be the same. Um, sconces are um, are basically light fixtures, but they're pretty fancy and and uh and they're i- i- they're they're really dramatic, so they're 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 really works, they're really works of art in in themselves. Uh, and that's what's being proposed here, I voted for this uh last year. Um, but, Mr. President, a- as as I said in committee that night, uh, you you know, I'm I'm just at, I'm at wit's end. And 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 now I, now I, I I don't wanna put the cart before the horse anymore with 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 uh with this project. So if if we're, if we're the last hundred thousand dollars with city Hoyoke taxpayer money, then count me in. Um, but there's a fourteen million dollar shortfall, and where have we heard that lately, Mr. President? This is not the first time we've heard of major shortfalls from from uh, from the Victory Theater. And 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 I I saw it's it's, and I and I guess I need to say this, it's it's, I I respect the Victory Theater, their management, their professionals, they're wonderful people. Uh, but I I'm I'm just, I'm at, I'm at the end of the line, um, you know, I've been on this board for in my tenth year. Uh, the Victory is Our sign has been up there since two thousand eight. Um, I I I just, I just have to say, it's uh uh, I I think it's, for me, it's uh, it's ti- it's time to move on, and and so I I don't support this at this minute, though I will support the Victory Theater down the road, w- once, w- once we get in into the final nitty-gritty, but but right now, I I think there's better uses with the fund. And and I do wanna thank finally the CPA committee, because they always do their due diligence, and I I almost always vote for the committee recommendations, but in this case, I I I cannot, thank you.
Counselor Graney, then Counselor Sullivan.
Mr. President, as a, you know, as a former educator and also a lover of the arts. I uh, you know, I needed to do some research, so I asked uh uh Jeffrey, our administrative assistant, to get the numbers for me, and he has the numbers, he emailed them to me today on the Victory Theater project, so I'm sure he can email them to every counselor that's here. All the money that's been spent, the the top line, the bottom line, uh, and so forth, it's a very interesting read. It's not that complicated. But if you do the mathematics, which I have, it's forty-six million needed for the project. Thirty-one million has been raised, that means we're fifteen million short. It took, I'm not sure, but it took approximately fifteen to twenty years to raise the thirty-one million. If we are fifteen million short or thereabouts on this project, that means if you go by the averages or the mean numbers, it's gonna take another seven and a half years to raise the additional money to complete this project. Now, this is uh a hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer's money. It's gonna be tied up for a period of time, it's gonna be committed to this project. And although I have voted in favor of the Victory Project before, uh, I now am tending to draw the line, as Counselor Bartley has said, that um, this has been a long time in the process, a long time, and the the boarding up of that building with Victory is Ours in front of it, I've been looking at for ten years, and I can no longer support this project until I see something concrete. Something that is, that is very relevant to improve at least the looks of the structure on the exterior of that building uh for the citizens of Hoyoke to take pride in, but to go by that theater uh for the last ten years to fifteen years and see a piece of plywood over it with a sign saying Victory is Ours. And I'm saying to myself, this is not good enough, so I cannot support spending a hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer money to continue to support this. As Counselor Bartley said, if and when the project is a goal and it is the last hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to spend on it, I'll gladly support it. But at this time, I'm drawing the line, I say no to spending this money on this project, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Uh, i- it seems to me, well, first of all, let me tell you, it was quite a uh conversation in the CPA committee, it didn't come out unanimous. And the, I I can tell everybody um by the uh attitude of the CPA committee, this is the absolute last uh la- last uh chance for extension, it it's pretty clear, it wouldn't go forward for another year after this, or request another year after this. Um, having said that, um, several times I keep he- hearing about spending uh taxpayers' dollars, we keep referring to spending money on the sconces, and um, we're not spending a dime. Um, no, no money would be spent at all until the entire amount is raised, which would make it successful. Um, as far as tying up money, there are no requests right now that are lacking for funding because this money is encumbered for another twelve months, so no project is hurting uh or wanting because of this, so I just wanted that to be clear to everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan?
That's it.
Anyone further, Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, uh, just a couple of follow-ups, um, we we did ask uh Mr. Sanders about the significance of the hundred thousand dollars in the project. You think it's not that big, but there's a couple of uh reasons that it's important that we uh, that we take a a positive vote this evening. Uh, one is, and I think Counselor Sullivan, you know, summed it up, there there's a, you know, if this grant dies because of the, because of the time limit, it doesn't come back to us for a vote, it would just die at the CPA level itself, and the money would be returned to CPA. But because it's been extended to us, you know, as Counselor Sullivan pointed out from CPA, you know, a vote by us that's negative could send the wrong message to some of the people who are looking to uh to bridge the gap of that uh thirty-eight million dollars for construction cost itself, so it does make sense, it's also money that many money that's in the pot, you know, that Mr. Sanders uses for leverage when he's out there beating the bushes and trying to uh to come up with the rest of the money that is necessary for for this project itself. Um, I I I would just, you know, at this point, you know, suggest that we vote in favor of it. Uh, it makes sense, uh, it's an extension, not new monies. Um, the CPA monies itself, we've had a lot of talk about that, you know, since that law was implemented. You know, I checked my tag, my quarterly tax bill, and I I believe I was hit for thirty-four dollars this last quarter. Um, I I think, you know, for the projects that have come out of CPA, I've been very happy and very pleased with the way they've done their work, with the proposals that have come before us, we have the final say. This is very specific and and I I trust Mike when he says it's not gonna make a a twelve-month difference in terms of where this money could be used somewhere else. Let's maybe try to keep sending that positive message and uh and and for the record, I'd love to sign, they will lobby, co-sign that to bring Mr. Sanders in. When I spoke to him over the weekend, he he is dying to come in and talk about not this project, but talk about MIPA and explain everything to us in as much detail as as anybody would want. And I think is is only Don can do, when when he, he tells a story, it's it's, it's a novel, it's not a short story, but he tells it very interesting, and I think the story has some great interest to it for this uh majestic and uh part of our, part of our history, but this majestic building that would be wonderful if we could bring it back to life. So I ask everybody to consider that, vote in favor for the uh, the extension, and then I'm I'm sure we're gonna return to this issue uh in a short period of time.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be very brief, uh, I guess I'm on the positive side of this issue, I I I will sign on to the order to have Don come in, um, last week about uh, last Monday before the finance meeting, I spoke to Don about ten fifteen minutes about uh the meeting that night, about what was gonna be coming up, and um, as Counselor Sullivan stated, it's uh extending this is not hurting any of the projects, um. We had a great uh meeting that night with Don, and he answered all our questions, um, I would love to find out more about MIPA and the money that's been raised and how much it's spent. I would love to see this building, I uh al- also, Don had stated that they acquired uh the one thirty-four Chestnut Street building um, right next door to the Victory that they're gonna use for some kind of staging and and dressing rooms for the Victory. Um, I I I see this happening, I know we're more than halfway there to raising the funds, uh, I have a positive outlook on this uh, this uh adventure for for the city of Hoyoke, and this one hundred thousand dollars is is more or less a a token of our city showing that we are in 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 involved in in the the process of what they wanna do uh downtown with the Victory Theater, so um, count me in, um, I'm definitely in favor of this project, and I look forward to uh the the future years of of raising money. Um, and hopefully some more um money comes into this project so they can meet their their goal, thank you.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I guess I consider myself an eternal optimist. I kind of look at this as the Hail Mary Pass from Victory Theater. And with the support of the CPA for one more year, and I believe Counselor Sullivan, when he says they probably won't take another bite at that apple, I say let's go for it, because I have seen the federal government spend our tax dollars in many worse ways. So it just might be that in this, in these unusual times, the federal monies will come through on a very unusual path, and this may actually really happen. And I really hope it does, I think it would be very good for our city and for the region, thank you.
Any, Counselor Leacy?
Uh, thank you, I'm just thinking it, I'm thinking of it as a one-year COVID extension. Um, of course, you know, if we could give them that year to sort of uh, you know, make up the lost time that perhaps COVID had inflicted upon the project. Um, they seem to be pretty close to pulling it all together, so why not just give them that that one year, you know, quote-unquote, COVID extension to to get it together?
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney?
I would just remark that Don Quixote was a very long novel in itself, I just hope that we're right here, but uh, I've lost faith, thank you.
See no one further, uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
As George Michael said once before, you gotta have faith. I have faith.
All right, with that, motion is to pass, uh, actually, mo- I don't have to do a first or second. This is just a clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the extension, for the one-year extension.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
No.
Graney?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Ten yeas, two nays.
Your vote, your approve the CPA extension sixteen D, committee on finance was referred in order that a hundred thousand dollars from stabilization to snow removal services, uh, recommend that be approved.
You motion receive, pass the first reading.
Receive, adopt, pass the first reading, under discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, we met with the, and the finance committee with our DPW superintendent, uh, Mike McInnis. Um, city engineer was present throughout the whole evening also, and we had a a very thorough discussion about this, uh, the mayor is proposing for snow removal, our line item known as snow removal, to use a hundred thousand dollars as stabilization. Uh, that will be well within the uh, the interest that has been earned on stabilization and that into the principal of the account itself. Um, as you know, we we have no uh free cash this year, uh, not to looking to have a a lengthy discussion about that, but it makes it very difficult to uh, to find the dollars necessary. Uh, when we went through the budget cycle last uh, last June, we did make a cut from this line item, the city council made the cut itself. I'm not too sure the mayor even funded it fully, and because we made that cut, we tripped the deficit spending law to the negative for the city this year, meaning that the DPW cannot deficit spend in this line item because we don't have the money that is equivalent to what was spent the prior fiscal year. Um, but more important, uh, Mike, you'll let us But more important, Mike, you'll let us know where the budget is now. That line item with money that's been encumbered is just about at zero. And this is, you know, before the storm that hit us yesterday was, I think it was someone's eye, but maybe not in the weather forecasters around here. Today, what has been spent out of the account is, as usual, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on salt. That is, usually, when I say as usual, I mean, the purchases made at the beginning of the fiscal year. He does a good job of going out there and finding the best deal. And thanks to Counselor Leahy and his experience with the state, he does a good job of, and Jimmy can do this better than me. But of measuring if, you know, when the loads come in, they're measuring them for any water liquid that's, that's involved in getting a discount on the abatement, I guess, on the, the purchase price itself. He told us that you're, you're anticipating a twenty to thirty, thirty thousand dollars per storm for this line item. For anything that is three inches or more, it gets to be a little bit more when you have a bigger storm as we did the day before. These are obviously in New England, necessary dollars. And, and Mike said that, you know, he, I, I, I think for a young department head, Mike is, got really good control over his budget. He always can talk in thorough about the, the full budget itself and explain what he's doing. He always tries to live within his budget. But this one, as, as I think the committee agreed, is something that we need to shore up to, to get them through the rest of winter. Hopefully get them all through the rest of winter. So the committee did vote in favor of the a hundred thousand dollars from stabilization to the line item known as snow removal services.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did attend the finance committee meeting, but I didn't think to ask this question that night, so threw the president to the chair if he knows. I have no quarrel with the reporting that Mike McManus did relative to his budget within his department. But I do remember last year, in the final months of the year, the mayor found a million dollars in transfers of open positions, other unexpended funds throughout various departments in the city. And threw you to the chair of the committee if he knows. Did the mayor look to these other potential transfers before landing stabilization fund as the only resource? If he knows. Thank you.
The, may I, Mr. President?
Yeah, Counselor there.
The mayor was not present, but I don't know the answer to that question. I will point out that at the end of last year, and, and because I was working with her closely, it was our auditor who was very diligent about identifying, you know, in the, in the final months of the fiscal year, what surpluses there were out there. There was a brief discussion in committee about this, you know, was, to that effect, Counselor Bacon. And, and I, as, as much as I would like to see, you know, surpluses identified, we still have seven months to go. And I think at this time, and, and I think we needed a quick fix, and, and I, and I think the storm that just happened tells us how important it was to get the money into this line item. We certainly are going to have more requests over the next five months. And I hope that they're not looking to use stabilization for everything, and that they're, and that the mayor and the auditor with the department heads are looking to identify surpluses. But at this point, I apologize for the long answer. I don't have, as far as this item goes, the exact answer.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we're down to five months now, so that's good, but thank you.
We're getting there.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Let me just fix this thing here. Yeah, let me, let me thank the finance chair again. Always a good report. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna just, just add, add some additional comments to that relative to that. So you heard the finance chair. I mean, I hope we're hearing this stuff. No free cash. So last year, we had a major negative free cash. This year, for various, now we have no free cash. And we've heard in the past from counselors, well, this is great, but this is not great budgeting. This is horrible budgeting. This is overspending our budget. So normally, Mr. President, we would have free cash available to supplement the, the snow removal. So let us emphasize again, there is no free cash available for the city of Hoyoke. Name me one other municipality in, in this same predicament, especially two years in a row. Well, there are none. Second of all, I hope we don't use stabilization again the rest of the year. I voted for this in committee, Mr. President, because it is permissible to use stabilization funds for snow removal deficits. So that begs the question, how do we get to a snow removal deficit? Well, it had nothing to do with the budget, Mr. President. We budgeted the right amount. The DPW superintendent used snow removal funds for purposes other than snow removal. So let, let that sink in for a minute. What he did use it for was repair of vehicles. Now, now we get that, but that goes back to an order I filed years ago about why isn't there a capitalization budget? Ask the mayor. I know we can't order him to come to meetings, but ask the mayor. So, so, so no cap, capitalization budget. So I, 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 I hope we're, I hope we're hearing, and, and then, then the, and, and I'm not, not, not being picky here, but but when I hear the argument that the hundred thousand dollars is less than the interest earned, you know, we've had that argument here before, Mr. President, multiple times, and, and we've rejected it multiple times. That's not the point. I mean, the, the stock market, we know all the, look at the, look at the Commonwealth's pension budget. It's up to eighty-six billion. I mean, holy cow. I mean, so everybody's, everybody's doing well. And, and I'm, and I'm happy the city of Hoyoke is right in line with that, but the, the fact that it's up to, that it's less than the interest earned, that, we, you, 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 you can't use that a, as an argument, and I hope the council doesn't try to rely on that or lean on that a, a, at all. It's, it's, it's got nothing to do with, with the use of stabilization. I, I think that's a faulty premise, and I hope we can, you know, disregard it for, for, because it's gonna, you know it's gonna come up again. So, so, you know, the council, the council did a good job in, in budget time. If the snow removal budget was used just for snow removal, Mr. President, we wouldn't be having this discussion. The snow removal budget, or a large portion thereof, was used for repairs to trucks. And I mean, I get it. I get, I get, but, but, so, so you, you would think that part of the budget would have been, would have been, it's probably exhausted already. You know, that was not cut by the city council. If it was cut, it was cut by the mayor, or was not properly budgeted by the DPW superintendent. So don't, let's not pretend that the city council cut the snow removal budget and we're in this predicament. That is not accurate. That's not accurate. The snow removal budget was used for things other than snow removal. So that part was not said tonight, but that part was, was discussed in finance. So I want to make sure we, we understand that. You know, budget manipulation is all part of the game, Mr. President. That's why we have the amendment that we passed, and, you know, Kevin named it after me, big deal, uh, 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 relative to bonding. So we, they, they can't do that anymore. We've had other orders here to, to try to, to, to try to prevent misconstruing budgets, but you know, we can only, we can only do so much. At some point, you have to rely on your department heads to follow, to follow the roadmap, which is the budget. In this case, that's not being done. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this tonight, Mr. President, as I voted for in committee. Because the, the need is there. The need for the vehicles are there, Mr. President. But as we also talked, and, and I think you filed the order, relative to, to the condition of, of, of the fleet, it's, 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 it needs, it needs shoring up, it, it to be, you know, mild. We, we've got to figure out a way to get a capital budget and to do, and to do real budgeting going forward, but so that, that's, I, I feel, and I hope I'm not stepping on anybody's toes, I feel that that's a more complete report from the, from the finance committee. Not that it was incomplete, but I think that just, just adds, adds a little more color to, to the report, and, and I, I hope that helps listeners. Thank you.
Counselor Lacy.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, there's a couple of things that I, I, I could say, but in the interest of just keeping things brief, I just want to note that the, the DLS has noted that we have been losing money from our free cash since two thousand and fourteen. So it's not just one year. It's not just two years. The, this problem with the deficits creeping up and creating points or hits against our free cash amount at the end of the year has been happening since two thousand and fourteen. So it's not just a one or two-year problem. It's just accumulated to the effect, to the effect that we are no longer receiving free cash payments. So, you know, we may have been losing, I'm just gonna, you know, claim a number here, not necessarily accurate, but we, we very likely could have been losing two million dollars a year since two thousand and fourteen from our free cash fund. But we're not, we weren't feeling it until now, where, where that fund is totally depleted. So that's the one thing that I wanted to, to note. And then otherwise, you know, I did file the order for a capital stabilization fund to be created because we see the success that the emergency stabilization fund has had in sort of shoring up the city against, you know, emergency situations or rainy day fund, if you will. And we, we need to start using, you know, some money to create investments in a capital stabilization fund and a plan to go along with that fund along, along the way. So I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just want to drive home the point that Counselor Bartley was making earlier. Some of the vehicles we're running are thirty-five years old, right? Most, and nothing puts more wear and tear on these vehicles than snow plowing. You couple that with the fact that we've got a, a bunch of, a, a whole group of employees in the last couple of years that had a lot of plowing, years and years of plowing experience are now gone. And also the fact that our, our DPW workers, some of these guys, once the, the rate that they're being paid, it, it only takes them six months or a year's worth of experience before they're going to a better paying job also. So this, when you're constantly training, training, training people over and over again, is compounding the wear and tear on the vehicles. So what just happened with, why we're out of the cash so quick, besides the repairs, the obvious repairs that had to get made to these vehicles, while these vehicles are down for repair, the work is being contracted out to outside contractors that are doing it at prevailing wage, which is roughly speaking, twice what a city, or, or in some cases, more than twice what a city worker is making. So a, as far as, I, I think just what happened overnight here, this last storm, I can tell you right now, it's gonna be one more storm, two more storms, and it's gonna be back added again, too. We really have to get going on equipment replacement in the DPW. It's, it's so long overdue, and it, it's, it's beyond the point of no return with some of these vehicles. Thirty-five-year-old vehicles out there to maintain this. All right? Thank you.
Counselor Leahy. You're on mute, Counselor. There you go.
There you go. Yeah, I share everybody else's concerns as well, and I did file many years ago, and Bill Fuqua was around, an order that the city looked into ASTMD thirty-two, which was the standard specs on sodium chloride, and making sure that we were not paid for waterway. But we do, or what the DPW does is the same thing as the state does and every other municipality, every other state. They check the moisture level. So what happens if you have high moisture, you're paying for, basically when it comes down to it, sodium, with salt, you're paying for a ton. And if you have a lot of water in that, you're paying basically for water that's either gonna evaporate or clump it up. If it clumps it up, it's gonna be a nightmare to work with, and it's not gonna work the way it should. What we've done in the past, many years ago, Fuqua here, is we got rebates. The city got money back. Now, according to Mr. McManus the other night, we're not getting rebates. We're getting extra salt. Well, I'd rather have money in our pockets. I'd rather have money in the coffers than getting extra salt. We can always negotiate a price down the road for that. I, I think it's very important to do, and I think that we should negotiate a better deal with the salt companies in getting money back, not getting free salt. Thank you.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make two brief comments. One, the situation that we're in with free cash was predicted by some of us on the council for years, and now we've hit the wall. And now we're breaking the piggy bank because the budget exceeds the ability of the taxpayers to support it. The budget must be brought into line with what the taxpayers of our city can afford. We all have to work together to do that, and I will not support use of the stabilization fund for this purpose. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's, it's shown that we definitely need this, just especially with this last storm, the transfer into this, this fund, as my colleague Counselor Sullivan stated, we get one or two more storms, and this is gone. And even Mike McManus stated that he may be coming back in a couple of months for more money, so I, I agree with my colleagues about the, the fleet. These vehicles, thirty, thirty-five years old, it just doesn't cut it. We have to look at getting a, a capitalization fund in there for, for equipment, and I think Mike is, he's given us a rundown of some of the vehicles he needs and possibly bonding or leasing those vehicles to, to sort of save some money down the road. I mean, it's one of those deals, pay me now or pay me later. And the cost of the, the private contractors in a storm like this is, does go up quite a bit. And also I want to state that, in, in defense of our DPW director, that there, during the, the past few months and with COVID, that there have been workers that have been sick and out of work. They're trying to get the job done with the, with the bodies they have. And that's not an easy task for, for a department that really has to be out in the public on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan, your hand still up, or is that from before?
That's from before.
Okay. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick follow-up. The, the cut, the budget line item, when it came to us, was four hundred thousand dollars. The same amount, give or take ten thousand dollars, that was spent by the DPW in the last three budget cycles itself in this line item. I, I doubt I went into good enough detail, but I'll go into more detail in terms of where the four hundred thousand dollars went. First of all, the city council cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, reducing the four hundred thousand dollars down to two fifty, with the caveat that we would visit it and return the money to the DPW, you know, later in the year when we found money to, to return to them. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I already mentioned, for the salt that was purchased, as always is purchased in bulk, reduced to two fifty, down to one thirty. The twenty, thirty thousand dollar storms, we've already had a few minor storms, so you knock down another sixty thousand dollars, and you're looking at about seventy thousand dollars. Mike explained that he has to encumber some of that money for contracted services to get people, you know, not necessarily knowing what storm he's gonna use them, but to get some people lined up for the storms that are coming. And yes, he explained to us that he used some of that for repairs. Repairs wasn't the normal repairs. Well, it was repairs that should come out of another budget, like we, Counselor Bartley. But they were, the hydraulics for the plows themselves and things that broke down during the course of the year that needed to be done immediately. And, and I agree with the capital, you know, outlay part. He also did purchase a new sidewalk, snow removal vehicle itself, or I don't know if you call it a vehicle, which, which I think should come out of a different line item myself. But I'll remind everyone, we have not seen one dollar of capital outlay in the budget for us since Mike Sullivan was mayor. And that's, that's, I think, is, is getting close to, I, I think, almost twenty years now. We have not seen any capital outlay dollars in the budget as requested by a department head, which I think is important, and as proposed by a mayor. We have seen nothing but expenses, and for the most part, the bulk of our budget is personnel expenditure itself for salaries. That, that is a problem. We, we did initiate, in our encouragement, a five-year capital projection budget, which I believe is kept up every year, but we rarely see it. It's talked about during the budget hearings. It's nothing that we can vote on, but it gives us an idea as to what the needs are. We did, although we tabled it, there's no report this evening, we did on on my ord- on my, an order I filed and this full city council agreed with, that we have a discussion on the replacement of vehicles within the DPW. And as noted by a couple of city councillors this evening, especially Counselor Sullivan, there are some serious needs in the uh fleet of the DPW itself, and something we need to, we need to look at uh very quickly. Mike has done a lot of work on that. He's looking at the least of I bonding and a number of different options before it comes before us, and that's why we tabled that order. Um I I did mention, and and maybe I said it wrong, that this money is within the interest that has been earned by stabilization. I meant that as a positive thing, not as a reason to use it, but as a positive thing that our stabilization account is still within the ten percent um range of the budget itself, something that we've kept it at over the years, but very rarely using it again. Though I think this is a appropriate use and a necessary use. We've already, if if you listen to the the Today Show or whatever station you listen to, the second big storm is already in the country on the west coast and headed our way for February. There's a good chance we're gonna see that before the uh the week's out. That's that's just something to keep thinking that February is not the end of winter. February in many places is the beginning of winter, and we need to shore up this this budget. We cut it. Um if there were monies out there to find, you know, that would be one thing, but I think this is a good use for stabilization.
Mr. President.
Counselor Graney. Quickly, I'm gonna vote for this transfer. However, this is a well we cannot continue to go to, and I suggest maybe that the council should letter the mayor, have the administrative assistant letter the mayor to see if he can find some funds somewhere else for future storms that we may may have this winter. I don't think that that would be uh problematic. I think we could do that tomorrow and put it in the mayor's uh, put it, send it to the mayor, a letter requesting him seek funds elsewhere for the next storm that's coming down the pike. Thank you very much.
Counselor Lisi.
I just have a question. I I have a recollection that the um snow removal removal is the only line item in the budget for which uh deficit spending is allowed. Is that correct, or?
It it normally is. I do believe that this year we had an anomaly. Is that correct, Counselor McGivern?
That's correct. The the master general law says in order to deficit spend in this line item, which Counselor Lisi is correct, you have to start with the amount that you expended in the prior fiscal year, prior years, um you know, service, so that you're not purposely cutting the line item out, deficit spending, and then finding the money later. So we, when we, we, and we talked about that during the budget hearings last June. Uh we, and we um, you know, even though we we were behind a rock and a hard place with the uh with the deficits that were being proposed in the budget, so this is one of the line items, I believe it was a seven to six vote to uh to cut that the city council did cut.
See, no one further? Uh Counselor Bacon?
Um just to note, I just sent over a late file to ask our auditor to find available funds that would be available for transfer to DPW. Just as a point of order, thank you.
No problem. Thank you for telling me. Uh.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Counselor Graney.
I'd like to be added to Counselor Bacon's uh order.
Wanna, I'll I'll get to that one, I'll add you, I promise. Right now, the one on hand is sixteen D. See nothing further. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, and clerk will call roll. Remember, if you're muted, I'm mute, as she calls your name.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley? Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Eleven yays, one nay.
With your vote, you approve the hundred thousand from stabilization for snow removal. Sixteen E, the committee of finance would refer an appropriation transfer of seventy-five thousand eight twenty-three from pay solicitor to uh special counsel services. Recommend that be approved.
Make a motion to uh receive, pass the first reading for purpose of.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading or discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had uh Crystal Barnes with us uh for a good part, I think the entire meeting, for for a couple of items that she was there to uh to discuss, and this was one of them. Uh what the uh, what the attorney Barnes is looking for is that we transfer from pay solicitor a line item that is not being used because the mayor has not, it's over a year now, has not filled the position of pay of city solicitor itself. Um I want to say something uh very important, that Crystal is doing that job, has been doing it since that position has been vacant, and unfortunately, she has not received and under any circumstances, an extra dollar for her her work, which I think has been commendable. Um her her job is is gotta be a difficult one. Uh she she is looked to as as the the head of the department. She is looked to as the person, the the go-to person in terms of what the city solicitor is responsible for, and yet she cannot receive the pay. Uh the mayor cannot permanently appoint her because of the residency clause itself. He could, he could re-point, he could appoint her on an acting basis, which I think we all know is uh good for ninety days, but the mayor has not done that. Um Crystal, I I can't say enough good things about the work she does. I I trust her immensely, and this, I know sometimes can be a controversial transfer, but this transfer is to pay for special counsel services. Uh she pointed out to us that this particular line item pays for our our new uh our new uh contract with the labor attorney, Russ Dupre, if I said it, said it right. Attorney has been on board now for not quite a year, but it's a uh, it's a monthly um contingency that is paid. It's also some per diem stuff that he does for the city for extra, that is not part of the uh the uh, the the agreement that the city has with him. Uh there are other accounts that are out there that are outstanding uh bills. Uh she outlined the the need for it, this particular uh line item itself is is down to zero, and she's looking to uh to get through the rest of the uh the fiscal year. The committee recommends that we do adopt this this evening. We've done it in the past. I know Counselor McGee has an order to have one in the near future. We are constantly looking for updates. Uh most of these updates have to be done in executive session because it's litigation that has not been settled, but I think the seventy-five thousand dollars at this point makes sense. She's living within her budget. I trust the way she spends money, and uh we fully recommend that we adopt this transfer this evening.
Anyone further?
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney.
I support this uh proposal. This is a a critical part of our city business, and uh Crystal does a great job, and I think that the council should support this transfer. Thank you.
Anyone further? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh Counselor Hernandez, is your hand up? I've seen the white hand pop up here.
Did I put it up?
Oh, there's, there's like a white hand on the screen.
On the motion.
Alright, so, oh, oh, jeez, actually, my mouse has now turned into a hand. I apologize. I don't know what that is. I've never seen that before. Alright, so.
Motion to pass the second reading.
First reading, now it's passed the second reading. The clerk will call roll. You vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Random miss vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
President, can I make a motion to suspend the rules and take sixteen F, sixteen G, and sixteen H as a package for discussion?
Motion to suspend the rules, take up F, G, and H as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. F is to, in accordance with master general law, chapter fifty-nine, section thirty-eight H, the council approved and ratified the agreement uh for the city of Hoyoke and Grow Hoyoke LLC uh for their pilot at one fifty Whiting Farms Road. The other one is another pilot for eighty-four Sergeant Street, and the other one is another pilot for seventy-five Appleton Street. Uh with all its motion, orders to recommend and to approve under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh Crystal Barnes stayed with us along with, these are all orders by Mike Sullivan, who is I think the uh city councillor who has been on top of these uh pilot agreements. Uh they both explained to us that this particular pilot is mandated by state law that it be approved by the legislative body, in our case of our our form of government. The um, the projects that you mentioned, these are solar fields. The Sergeant Street one is the Jesus project that was where the uh um the Parsons Paper Mill was taken down, some new construction in a solar field was put up in an expansion one, a a renovation of one of the old buildings. Uh the the uh Appleton Street, I believe, is the old uh AMPAM building, and the Whiting Farms Road is the solar field at uh at Gary Rome. Um we were reminded that the deal is 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 across the board, is five thousand dollars for megawatts, if I'm saying it correct. Uh these are all profits, and and we want them to be profit-making uh entities. The uh, my Counselor Sullivan, I I think I should just turn it over to him, but you know, he did point out to us too and remind us that it's very expensive to get one of these projects going, even though it can be lucrative in the long run. And if they, if the the cost of uh of the tax cost, cost to the local municipality, you know, was done in any other way, it could prevent people from from going and 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 uh and doing these uh solar fields themselves. So it makes sense on the city part to work with these projects. Gas and electric has to buy the power, the grid, I'm sorry, gets the power, gas and electric is on board with this, and uh we recommend that we approve each of these projects.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yep, no, a- as usual, uh the finance chair su- summed it up beautifully. Um it's really just a formality. Every, everything else is in line on these. It's, it's just they did go through the whole system uh without what's required by the state. The uh the, I I know on a couple of these, the property owners did get hit pretty hard because the paperwork wasn't done in time the first, done properly the first time for them to take advantage of it in the first year. Um so I, you know, I think we should just get these done tonight. They're completely, the the amounts of the pilots are completely in line. Uh it is roughly about five thousand dollars a megawatt. These are on average three megawatt facilities, so.
Alright.
Questions?
See no one else? Uh they took it up as a package, so motion would be to receive and approve the pilots for all three. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for all three of them.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez? Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Random miss vote.
With your vote, you approve those pilots. Sixteen I, the committee of finance would refer an order that the city of Hoyoke Park and Rec Department rebuild a concrete outdoor handball court. Hoyoke once had three courts that are now down to one wooden one. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Refer to Park and Recreation for a CPA and CDBG application. Under discussion?
Just to make a motion to receive and adopt and send over to the Park and Rec.
Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Well, very quickly, we, there were four committees that met last week, and each committee met for over four hours. Um I I call it the COVID, where we're all just talking a little bit longer than I think we normally do, but maybe that's true, maybe it's not, but this discussion came late in the evening, and yet it was fascinating. It was fascinating because of the two presenters of their love for the sport of handball. Uh I need a little bit of help. One was Nancy Ortiz, who is, she, her position is with uh, is with the sport itself and and an association that that works very closely with this. She talked about the stuff that they do, uh presenting this to uh to to kids and presenting this to adults in terms of a great sport that it is. Uh the second speaker was, if anybody can help me, was uh Will.
Ortiz, her husband?
Her husband, yeah, his first name was Will, correct?
William, yeah.
You know, the love he has for this sport, and 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 more important, I think, is he had to make sure that our our residents uh of all ages have the opportunity to play this in a, in a reasonable uh uh handball court situation throughout the city. And uh we, we just had a fantastic discussion. Uh two city councillors uh did come up with the thought, and Mike Sullivan, I think, agreed that this just might fit along the lines of a CPA proposal, and I, and we would just ask that the city council endorse that and probably ask the Parks and Rec, if not the DPW, to put that proposal together.
Counselor Leahy.
Uh thank you. As always, Counselor McGivern, uh steals the thunder of the maker of the order. Uh however, uh we did have uh two wonderful people come in. I've been communicating with them for a couple of weeks now. As a person who used to play uh handball down at Lauren's school, and I, and I said it that night, and I and I still stand behind this correctly. I think it came down to the City of Hoyoke championship. Juan Anderson Burgos and myself, and I think I just nearly beat him.
Wow.
It didn't match. Came down, and I, I still have the trophy somewhere in my house. Um but having said all that, uh I I can't say anything more than Joe. Um so hopefully that the City of Hoyoke builds some ideal um handball courts that are within the rules, because some of the handball courts throughout the community and other communities aren't uh specific enough, and they can't have tour uh tour tournaments on it. And bringing people into the city will only benefit the restaurants, the gas stations, the supermarkets, et cetera. It's a, it's a great thing, and it brings a lot of people in. Um but having said that, uh once again, I'm looking forward to beating one again. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you, uh Mr. President. Uh I signed on to this order because I, uh my nephew is actually a handball player, Jose Bayron, who's also on the uh CPA and the Parks and Rec Commission. He's friends with William and Nancy Ortiz, and uh William played uh actually down in um, I think, the Flats in South Hoyoke, and I can remember early on, uh my younger days, being down uh East Dwight and Center Street, watching them play uh handball. And a little known thing I didn't realize about handball is that it started in Ireland, and they came over here, and the Irish played handball uh in the uh, in the area, and the, and the towns, actually in the big cities. So I I think this is a great uh order. I think it's great to to look into some kind of funding through the CPA and the uh community development block grant money to get, bring people into town and to get the the kids off the streets. It's uh something that would really be helpful to the young, the youth in our community. Thank you.
Uh next is champion, uh handball champion, Anderson Burgos.
Thank you for that history, uh Councilman Tomlin. Uh so I did not know that it was originated in Ireland, but I will tell you that the Puerto Ricans perfected it. Just saying.
Oh, wow.
And 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 Jimmy, I will challenge you any day, any day with my best of knees. But no, listen, o- on a serious note, um growing up, born and raised in Holyoke, um I remember playing handball, and it was a sense of community. It's, it's a, i- it was a time when the 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 young men and women gathered together, and there was no arguments, there was just good, wholesome playing, working with your community, being involved, and it led to more positive outcome. You know, to me, this brings back community. We need more community activity in this city. We need to come together, and this is just the beginning. And thank you so much. I I absolutely love this, and I want to be part of it as much as I can.
Alright, so the motion is to receive, that it's been complied with, and refer to Park and Rec CPA and the CDBG for applications for uh funding. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Next is Public Safety Committee. Uh Counselor Murphy, do you want to take them up as a package that they're complied with?
A to F, all uh 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 package, and then I can, they're, they're all ordered, uh that they've complied with, and I can give a report on them if that's okay.
So motion to suspend the rule, take up seventeen A through F. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Quickly, seventeen A, committee of finance referred, nor that an abundance of caution and taking. Seventeen A, Community Finance referred, nor that an abundance of caution and taking into consideration all the can uh canuous actions on walnut and cabbage, a bigger stop sign with lights on it. The beneficial would make the corner safer, recommend is complied with. B, the Community of Public Safety was referred, nor that the representatives of acting ambulance come to a meeting and public safety may discuss response times, uh complied with. C, uh Community of Public Safety was referred, nor that the police department provide an update on drug overdose deaths for the last two years, also provide an update on drug dealing arrests, crime stats, including shootings and murders in the last two years, including stats showing the comparison of Hoyoke residents versus out of town, complied with. D, Community on Public Safety was referred in order that the Public Safety Committee invite in Dave Conte and the water commissioners discuss the water filtration system, or that's complied with. E is Public Safety was referred in order, in addition to uh speed limit posting of thirty miles per hour. Be placed in strategic locations on mountain road for excessive speed that has become a severe safety hazard, complied with. And F is the Community on Public Safety was referred in order, the uh Property Preservation Group, formerly known as the Property Problem Group. Building Commissioner and Mayor's Office come before the Council of Public Safety and provide an update to the Council regarding the top twenty list of problem buildings. The efforts the city has removed the buildings and update the balance of funds of city vacant uh property budget. And that's complied with. Under discussion, Counselor Murphy?
Okay, on uh seventeen A regarding the uh stop sign in the intersection at Walnut and Cabbage Street. Uh the DPW is going to review all the police reports of significant issues at that intersection over the past five years uh and determine what might be necessary to improve safety. It may be that it is the cost of a solar or a solar uh powered flashing stop sign. Uh but they are going to look to see if that is required or if uh a larger stop sign might uh do the same thing depending on what the results have been. Uh and the ending, part of the i- issue is is cost, but obviously if if safety is the concern, we will do the solar stop sign. So so solar stop sign, which is about fifteen hundred dollars and needs replacing about every five years. Uh but if not, we will expect that we will have a a larger uh stop signs posted on that intersection. And if there's any questions, I go, I'll e- answer them as as you ask on regarding.
Counselor Hernandez has her hand up for that one. Counselor Hernandez?
Hi, thank you so much. Um I appreciate all the work on Councilor Murphy and, or councillor, right? We're not supposed to say names, but um.
Well, you can say councillor Murphy, it's it's
Oh, okay.
No, no, you can, you can say the name. No, that's not a problem. It's you can't be uh disparaging is what the rule says.
Oh, okay.
And you weren't, you were being just fine.
Councilor Murphy, thank you so much for all of this work and I hope that once we receive all the data that um because I mean, right now, for for living here, like for twenty years, I know that the area is very dark. And even when they trim the trees and whatnot, I've seen the accidents happen. So I know that the um larger sign with the lights is what's gonna make a difference to um to prevent these from happening. I mean, we even had like one time a car take out a police cruiser there and thank goodness, you know, it didn't lead into any tragedy, but it was very scary and um I think that because the the cars go all the way in line up um to the corner because of, you know, we we have um so many cars and a little bit of um space. It prevents the vehicles from seeing the cars that are coming down in cabin. So I think that the larger um sign with the lights is really gonna slow down and make sure that the necessary caution is taken. But thank you so much for your effort.
You're welcome. And and the city engineer is really is working on, and he is going to get all the data and then make a judgment as to uh which which we need to do to make the the intersection safer, so. And he will keep us posted. Alright, in terms of seventeen B, which is regarding uh the uh report from Action Ambulance. Uh we met with the representative from Action. Uh they gave us quite a bit of information. Uh number one, primary response time is under eight minutes and fifty-nine seconds ninety nine, ninety percent of the time. And the hardest way, the hardest area to get to is out in West Hoyoke. Uh average response time for the past year was five minutes and nine seconds. So from the point of the call to the point of getting there, uh pretty, pretty solid. And with an average uh time on the scene of sixteen minutes and thirteen seconds after their arrival. Regarding getting to the hospital, their average transport time was seven minutes and ten seconds getting to the hospital. They had ten thousand four hundred and seventeen calls in two thousand and twenty. Uh seven thousand two hundred and ninety-seven of those needed transport. Uh and seventy-seven percent of transports went to Hoyoke Medical Center and eighteen percent went to Bay State. They have two advanced life support vehicles and one basic life support uh vehicle regularly staffed. And they are hoping, once the COVID virus is has to surrender, that they will hopefully get back to having a vehicle at each of the three main fire stations once it is safe and healthy to do so. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, seventeen C, uh we received a report from Sergeant Hart. Uh and in two thousand and nineteen, we had five hundred and eighty-five drug complaint arrests. Mostly heroin heroin related and we had three murders. We had one hundred and eighty-four shooting incidents reported. In two thousand and twenty, we've had less arrests, three hundred and eighty-two drug arrests. Uh and there was some concern because of the virus that maybe we're not quite as, but we're also trying to make sure that we uh try to save, keep everybody safe as possible. Three hundred and eighty-two drug arrests, six murders and a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty shots fired. Uh in two thousand and nineteen, there were three hundred and sixty-five total overdoses. Uh reported, there were ten fatalities and we had a hundred and forty-two successful Narcan uses. In two thousand and twenty, there were four hundred and forty-seven overdoses, so that's an increase of about eighty. Sixteen fatal fatalities, which is an increase of six, and we had two hundred and four uh successful Narcan rescues. Which our Narcan rescues went up, but obviously we had more cases of overdoses. All said on that?
Um.
Counselor?
Yes, thank you. Um I just want to comment and thank um the councillor who made an amendment to my order on this to talk about the statistics and those who are from Holyoke and those who are from outside of Holyoke. This was a very informative statistic. Significantly more than fifty percent of the people that were involved in these statistics come to Holyoke to get their drugs and take their drugs and unfortunately often overdose on the same drugs that they bought here. That to me is a very significant data point in terms of the strategies that we need to rethink relative to our city. We do not want to be a destination point for people who are addicted to heroin and other drugs. Unfortunately, the statistics are showing that that is exactly what is happening here. And so um I appreciate the support of the committee to ask Sergeant Hart to go back to our police department and to hopefully sit down and try to think out of the box and come up with some new strategies relative to what the drivers are that are drawing the people here and what some proactive strategies might be to reduce that. Um Councilman McGivern offers, often says, you know, we're the community serving and servicing poverty. Uh we're also becoming the community that is a destination point for these um drug addicted folks coming in to our community. Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, thank you, uh Mr. President. Uh let me just fix this first. So um thank you to the to the chair for putting together a great agenda. It was a very lengthy agenda and I was able to attend most of the meeting. And I learned a lot. One of the things I learned, Mr. President, is from Sergeant Hart. There were panhandlers, there were twenty-six overdose panhandlers that we know of. Six deaths. Now, I didn't see that reported anywhere. Um and and I and I know the chairs, it it's very hard, Mr. President, to 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 run a meeting and and to keep order and to keep all the notes and all that. I mean, I I've, I've been doing it now for a number of years, as you have, it's so. I'm just gonna, that bears repeating, twenty-six overdoses from panhandlers, six fatalities. Six fatalities. Okay, so it's not the mean city council, Mr. President. And and you know, I I've been biting my tongue in this one, it's come up uh several times. But I I'm, and I bit my tongue many times, although I didn't initially, when we had when we had the infamous Merural Task Force from twenty seventeen that met one time. One time. I'm waiting for the Ward Six Councillors Task Force to commence activity on panhandling. This is now, it's not just the mean city councillors such as myself that want to clear up our intersections. Now we're talking about money given to the panhandlers. And are we kidding ourselves? We know it's not for them to 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 pay child support or to pay a mortgage. We know it's for drug use. And now we know from Sergeant Hart's statistics, so it's not me making it up, six fatalities. These are our brothers and sisters that are in a terrible predicament. They need help. It is not to give them money so they can go, like my friend, Pat the Panhandler, that we talked about last week and and that's gonna come up in uh seventeen F, that sat in a house as a squatter at sixty-seven sixty-nine Longwood Avenue. Had no ownership interest, Mr. President. And yet the City of Holyoke had to pay him cash for a house he didn't own to get him to leave the house. Thousands of dollars. It wasn't twenty bucks and a Happy Meal. It was thousands of dollars to give Patrick, I used to talk to him all the time, o- over here at the uh at the um at Whiting Farms and uh North Hampton Street. So ma- maybe this will get reported on, but you know, I've got to thank the chair for and 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 the and the committee for for putting some, so now we know there's not just a face to these people. And I shouldn't say these people, I saw, and I got thrown, I got, I don't want that blown back in my face, for our fellow friends here that are in a terrible position. Twenty-six ODs, six fatalities. Let that sink in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Seeing no one else, Counselor Murphy, back to you.
If I can just, I'm just gonna add, if Counsel Vacan is correct, I mean, the uh Sergeant Hart indicated that about thirty percent we knew were from Hoyoke. About forty percent we knew were not from Hoyoke and there were another thirty percent that he felt based on the information he had, more than likely they were not from Hoyoke. Uh in terms of 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 the uh issue with drugs and stuff. And again, and I know it'll be coming up with Counselor Bartley, so I won't say a whole lot, but again, the goal, the goal of all of our organizations with regard to panhandlers is to get them the help they need and to try to get not to basically ignore them, but to not have citizens giving them money that just creates or allows the a problem to continue to persist when we can provide services that will improve their quality of life. So seventeen D?
Correct.
Okay, we met with uh Dave Conte and Commissioner Jordan. The other two commissioners did uh indicate they had a a commitment, they came up and they were unable to make it. Uh this is regarding the uh the filtration of water. Uh Hoyoke is one of two statewide waivers for filtering. Uh which is going to be up for review again this June. Uh Hoyoke's water does meet, and this was emphasized very clearly, does meet all drinking standards in state and federal regulations without filtering, which is why we've been able to get the waiver. Uh when we are required to filter our water sources, everything that has been built so far, including chemical treatment and UV disinfection facilities will be part of the process. Uh and at the estimated costs of filtering all of our water supply is twenty million dollars. And when it is done, because we've been able to delay, uh when it is done, we will have the most updated uh system probably throughout the state. So our potential for having uh filtering mean mean the bet, mean the better quality of water uh is because we've been able to hold off. They also emphasize, and I think anyone who has any water issues, they made it very clear, if you have a water issue in terms of discoloring or something else, you feel feel free to call the Water Department. And all consumer issues should be reported and they will send someone to check the problem and 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 clear the water, clean the water as quickly as possible. So they made that very clear that they are willing to do that. Uh and I hope that any citizens that have any problems will will take them up on that. And uh hopefully it'll be done this way they said.
Counselor Bartley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh this was again another great order. Uh I I I had to leave that part of the meeting, but I did follow up with Mr. Conte, who 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 gave me uh the the Reader's Digest version of his committee re- meeting and um and I did follow up with Commissioner Jordan on on this as well and and I would encourage any councillor to follow up with Mr. Conte, because you're you're gonna, you're gonna be be the better for it. You're gonna learn a lot about the the city and the city's infrastructure. And so um what, and I I thank the chair for an excellent report. The uh City of Hoyoke is one, is is in fact one of two communities, uh or one of two entities. The other is Aquabin. As 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 a president knows, uh the the Quabin, except for Partisal Hadley, and all all that water flows out to Boston. Um so they they swallowed up four communities in Western Mass and and all all the water goes down to Boston. So so thank you, thank you, state legislature for uh for flooding four towns in the nineteen twenties. Thank you very much for that, so you could have water. Um Mr. uh Conte noted that even wi- with with treated water on a scale of zero to one, the average is is uh is point three, Hoyoke's is point four. So we're 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 right where we need to be. And and that's that's why, that's why we're 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 getting, we're getting the waiver. Um the the um, I did want to ask him a sidebar question about fluoridation because that that comes up from, it hasn't been a city council, Mr. President, for about six or seven years, but it was coming up quite a bit earl- uh at at that point, and I suspect it'll come up again. Um Mr. Conte's opinion is fluoridation is is here to stay, so uh whether or not that's, that that could be amended, but that's that that's the bottom lines, what what he basically said. Uh the final thing, uh Mr. President, i- is is the I, well, I shouldn't say here to stay, uh let me just clarify, it would be an arduous process to to take fluoridation out. That I, that's that's a little more closer to what he said. Uh so let me, let me correct myself on on his comment. Uh the uh the final comment is is that even with all the bonding, all the work we've been doing, the City of Hoyoke's rates are gonna be competitive with our sister cities. And that is, I think, great news. So along with the, you know, the 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 diamond in the city, which in my humble is the G and E, I I think uh the 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 uh ancillary, uh the the other diamond is is the is the waterworks. And and we're 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 luck lucky to have them. I I think that it's just, you know, we thank our city uh mothers and fathers for 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 coming through with with such wonderful entities and and they're they're, those entities are credit to the uh ratepayers and the taxpayers of the city. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. Uh I just agree. I think that two um uh very similar diamonds in the city are the gas and electric and also the water. I mean, we have the best water going. Uh we own five reservoirs. It's absolutely amazing. Uh just to so everybody knows out there, at the four towns of Quabon, Redana, Enfield, Prescott and Greenwich, and James Michael Curly, the good mayor that he was, uh he flooded those four towns because he had a he had to get water for his uh people out of Boston. However, um uh Dave Conte is a fountain of information. I hope that guy never retires. Because uh he just, he just knows so much and he is so good at uh educating you as well. Um that's all I can say. Thank you.
Uh one one point to make, uh it was kind of touched on, but because we're getting emails and stuff on this whole issue and Dave came in and did exactly what I knew he would do is is fill us in where we needed that uh refresher. There are new compounds coming in our waters that weren't seen before. And due to the way they've been treating the water and taking on that task, slowly doing it. They didn't have to build a filtration. They didn't have to build a filtration system that would have cost us millions of dollars, twenty million dollars way back when. Which now whoever built one twenty years ago or whatever it was. Has to redo their filtration system to meet these new compounds. So by our water department being proactive and doing what they're doing to treat the water, make sure it's the best water the city has. We've been slowly building up, you know, like the UV lights, everything else to take on the task. So that when ultimately, ultimately, we are forced to do a filtration system. All these other pieces that are in place. Are gonna make it better for the city. So I I I can't thank them enough for what they do do. But at the same time, being proactive is saving us money in the long run. I I think people are missing that in in the story here, so. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Counselor Murphy.
Okay, on seventeen E, uh, related to Mountain Road and and speeds. Uh, we did meet with Bob, uh, Bob Parent, the city engineer, and after discussion. Uh, the goal is to, the goal, and I and I would wanna make sure that Counselor Bacon and Counselor uh. Greenie and Counselor Tomlin are all in agreement, I'm pretty sure they are. Was to designate Mountain Road as a thickly settled district and post twenty-five mile per hour speed limits now, or as near in the future as possible. Uh, and if this does not meet the needs, uh, the the engineer said they would need a detailed engineering study. Which could be conducted to look at thirty mile per hour speed limits, which would then require uh approval from the Mass DOT. So, uh, I think the DPW is is looking at doing the uh thickly settled district at a twenty-five mile. Speed limits, and and I I wanna make sure that Counselor Bacon and Counselor Greenie and Counselor Tomlin, the filers, I I. I think they were all in agreement, but.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon said yes, Counselor Greenie?
Oh, Counselor Greenie.
Yeah, uh, I'm in contact with the residents out there all the time, and um, um, as soon as those signs go up, we'll know.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanna note that Bob said that they could just go ahead and put them up, that they didn't need further legislative. Action to do it, because we had adopted the citywide limits, so that was a helpful change. On this matter. Thank you, and thanks to the committee.
Thank you.
Now, Counselor Murphy.
Seventeen F, uh, we did meet with Amy and Cody, uh. And to discuss the number of properties and and and. It is, the the name of the group, which used to be the Problem Property Group, has been changed to be now the Property Preservation Group. Uh, with the goal of hopefully, you know, getting in involved with buildings and maybe able to keep them uh. Refurbish them and keep them going, but we do have some major issues, and some of those on the highest highest part of the list, one forty-six Brown Avenue. Uh, which I know Counselor Bartley is very familiar with, sixteen Commercial Street. One fifteen Newton Street, two eighty-nine Main Street. There are about sixty properties that they are currently have on their list, uh. And some are owned by the city, some are owned by private property owners, and some are. Going to tax title and a few other things, some we're trying to find if we can get receivers, so there's all kinds of things going on. Uh, obviously. When we need to demolish them, we need to be able to be in a position to do that, and I know, uh. Well, the city has a demolition team, I mean, uh, they're they're pretty much strapped, and I know Counselor Sullivan's very familiar with them. Uh, but, you know, I mean, we have some issues that we need to get resolved, we can keep these things going, but once we know a building is beyond repair. Uh, we need to find a way to move move them and and we need to uh. For every neighborhood that has some of these buildings, we need to make sure that the quality of life is improved by removing buildings that can't be repaired. And or that are environmentally dangerous. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is that A through F are.
Comply with.
Comply with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There was no Public Service Committee, off to DG and R, nineteen A, Committee on Development and Government Relations. Who was referred amendment of fiscal year twenty nineteen, annual plan to incorporate the CDBG. Slash uh CV funds, part two, round three, in the amount of four hundred eight six thousand three twenty-four.
Motion received, Dr. Community Report.
Motion received, adapt, under discussion, Counselor.
You know, you know, this 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 is kind of a, this is COVID-related money, uh, we we had Alicia Zeller in. Um, she she gave a a good, a a really good summary, uh, I'm just gonna. Point out a couple things, uh, Mr. President, uh, so we've we've got. In this round, uh, four hundred eight six thousand three twenty-four, forty-five thousand dollars of that approximately is for admin money. Three hundred forty-one thousand is for public services, wherein the the Board of Health pandemic response is two and two twenty-five. And there's other services such as food rental assistance, legal services, childcare for one hundred sixteen thousand. And the last bid is a hundred grand for small business grants. And um, and so we we want, I mean, this, as you know, Mr. Pres- the President and and is, you know, you know, the Finance Chair and and, you know, really real veteran, veteran counselors know. You know, it's CDBG fund basically, and you know, we just kinda review it and we we talk about it, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it, but. But we we certainly wanna know where where the where the money's going or where it could go. I I was a little taken aback at the committee meeting, cause when I asked when we're gonna, how we're gonna advertise this. I i- is it gonna be on a on a on the on the website? Um, I don't know. I said, did you talk to Wally Computer? No, I didn't talk to him. So so I I know, I know she, I know they're making an attempt to advertise for for the business grants. I think we all got the email about the the last round, wh- where the grants went, that is not before us right now, but that is a public document. Uh, where where those uh, where where those thousands of dollars went, um, very specific places, um. You know, there's there's um, there there is an application process for for business people for the hundred thousand, I I just think it's imperative that. That the city do its best to get the word out to the extent that it can. Whether it's on the website or on Channel fifteen or Channel twelve or or through the Chamber of Commerce, uh. Just somehow to get that word out. Um, so, uh, the committee heard, heard, heard from Alicia, she, you know, as per usual, she does, she does a great job, um. And we uh, we recommended it be approved. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, we'll have the clerk call the roll with regards to this. It looks like on the back page, the resolution of the council accepting it. Record the a's and nays.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Greenie?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez, Lisi? Lisi? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Twelve a's.
Lisi's a yes, in case you didn't get that. Thanks.
Your vote, you approved it. Nineteen B, Committee on DG and R, who was referred an uh order letter from trustee of reservations requesting support. For the waiver of a hundred and twenty day notice. For DCR to acquire parcel, if considered the same, refer back to committee without recommendation.
Yeah, motion received.
Motion is to receive. No report, all those in favor?
Yeah, there's there's no report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nineteen C, Committee on DG and R, who was referred. Uh, an order pursuant to three oh one CMR fifty-one point oh seven, I Todd McGee, Chairman of the Council. Uh, City of Hook, uh, agreed to waive the one hundred and twenty day period as required by a section of the parcel of land approximately twenty-one. Point seven four five acres of City of Holyoke shown on Exhibit A. Uh, in which the Department of Conservation and Recreation is considering acquiring. An interest map, uh, lot two one seven oh 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 six, a considerable same, refer back to committee without recommendation.
Um, yeah, this is again, same thing, motion received.
Motion is to receive.
Under discussion.
Under discussion, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, um, uh, it was actually a very fruitful discussion, uh, frankly, Mr. President, and um. I I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that, you know, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure where where the rhetoric was coming from early in the meeting. But but let's, let's just, let's just state for the record. That. We invited everybody. And we received comments from whomever was before us. As we always do, Mr. President. We suspend our rules, we invariably, even though it's not a public hearing, we invariably suspend our rules and allow the public to address us. Which we did that night. We specifically invited, and I have the invitation right here to DCR from that from uh data January twentieth, sent it three twenty seven, said to me. Confirming from Jeff that 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 representatives were 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 indeed invited from DCR. We had a great discussion with uh one of the proponents of the uh. Um, LLC that purchased the property for a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, from the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, there was a comment in in public comment, you know. A a completely ignorant comment, cause based on no facts. Uh, I mean, we had, I mean, first of all, it's a deal between. Two private entities, not not the City of Holyoke, Mr. President. So a private entity called the Boys and Girls Club and another private entity, an LLC duly organized. Came up with a deal for a hundred thousand dollars. There was a comment and public comment that DCR was gonna offer more. Well, what's that based on? That's based upon not a fact, Mr. President, before us. And besides that, it's got nothing to do with the city council. Only before us was the the waiver or not of the permit. That that was it. That's all that was before us, but all of a sudden, this this swell came up. I I'm gonna tell you, and I'm not gonna say a name, I have known the attorney for the LLC for. For years, not my life, but a number of years. That attorney is to me an honorable person, and that attorney said to me. We have tried repeatedly to get a meeting with DCR. To no avail. I mean, repeatedly means probably a lot of times. I didn't ask him to quantify it. But is it double digits? Probably heading up that way. Why the obstinance? You know, it's 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 remarkable, the the hubris of lawyers, and this is the part. That bothered me, now maybe, you know, maybe I use a little bit of a, you know, poetic license. But, Mr. President, when I read from a lawyer, who by the way, was invited to this. DCR's right to acquire the parcel expired as a result of the delay. Of the city council and the property has been sold to a third party, which we understand, which we, this is what I love. Which we understand, now this is a lawyer, we understand. Was known to at least several council members. So this attorney, um, I'm not gonna say, Assistant General Counsel, I, what a title this is, for DCR. Makes an allegation in an email, Mr. President. With zero substantive backing to it. Where she was invited to come to a meeting. And this is what we get in response. So zero backup, Mr. President. Property has been sold to a third party, which we which we understand was known to at least several council members. A, doesn't say how they were known, B, doesn't say who the council members are, C, provides no third party's support. For this, and I said. Which our former solicitor pointed out, I said, this is almost libelous. Now, is that poetic license? Well, maybe it was. I'm sorry I hurt the gentleman's feelings, I feel horrible about it. Um, but but here's, there's no, and this is why they don't show up. And and I'm and I'm getting, I'm getting these emails, you know, we're not, what? We were invited, and our administrative assistant, and I will say yet again. He is a credit to this body. He does his job, and I know darn well, he invited a numerous people. So everybody had a chance to pitch in, uh, we we, like I said, we heard from the proponent. They have a private deal outside our purview, Mr. President, nothing to do with us, and um. And and listen, I I, from my perspective. Uh, as as a humble tax paying. Party in the city, uh, this is, if it comes to fruition, it's gonna be, I think, a benefit to the City of Holyoke. It's gonna be a benefit importantly to the environment and to the natural heritage that's there. So we at the city council did our part. Allegations aside, I think we can be proud of the work that we did, and I'll end my committee report there. Thank you.
Anyone further on nineteen C? Seeing no hands. Motion is that it's, you said received, correct?
Received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes, uh, nineteen D. Committee on DG and R, who was referred in order of resolution related to the geriatric authority of Holyoke's sale. Have considered the same, refer back to committee without recommendation.
Yeah, but motion received, I get a second, I just wanna make a discussion.
Motion is to receive, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I I, uh, right, this. Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm. I've got, I've got papers flying everywhere. As Counselor Bacon said, I I I look forward to when we're back in chambers, so I can. Okay, um, yeah, yeah, this was a, um. Uh, you know, this this was a resolution um relative to geriatric authority. Um, I I just wanna, I just wanna refer to my notes for a second, cause we we had some really, really great um. Speakers uh for this, and and I wanna make sure I remember her, her name, oh.
Rudy Renaud?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, the the, yes, oh boy, I'll tell you what, uh, we had, as again, so we, it's not a public hearing. But as we always do, we open it up to the public, in this case, I didn't, I didn't know this, but we were honored by the presence of the. Of the former city council president for uh for the city of Greenfield, town of Greenfield. And um, and her remarks were 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 incredible, and and uh we had a Valerie Clark, and we we had some, we had other other people. Uh, chime in, and it was, it was invaluable testimony. I I I said, and the committee uh agreed with me, I, you know. The 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 way this works, Mr. President, as you know, is that, first of all, we we approved a a sale of the real estate, and here we have a resolution. Um, and and just from my part, it it didn't really, um. Uh, it didn't really ring right, uh, in in terms of, um, you know, so we 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 sold a property that was in my, it was a white whale. A- a- and so the geriatric authority for, we sold for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Okay, not the greatest price in the world, we can all agree with that. But what, the point we're we're not quite grasping all the time is, we're looking at about three million dollars in demolition costs, Mr. President. So. That in that decision. As I mentioned to our colleague from Greenfield. That decision is not made by city council. We we just review it and we we don't negotiate, as Joe Sal says to us all the time, we're we're not negotiating anything. That's room one, that's the mayor of the City of Holyoke. That is it. That's where the rubber hits the road. We simply looked at the option that we had before us, and we took a vote with the information that we had at the time. And and it was unanimous. To approve that sale, Mr. President, as you recall, unanimous vote. Now we have a resolution. That, you you know, for my part, it 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 kinda said a few, a few things in the whereas's, and and especially in the. In the in the in the, and be it resolved part, um, that that I think were, um, you know, uh. You know, I gotta be careful of words, I I don't think it was right the way it was, it was put towards towards uh, towards Bay State and Kindred. Uh, for two reasons, one, uh, one, they talk about, um, they talk about, uh, it's a union-related thing, well, Bay State Kindred, if you recall that, that, cause you were there, Mr. President. Um, Bay State Kindred said. Yeah, they're okay with unions and and then they'll they'll work with unions, so, you know, what am I, what am I supposed to say to that? Um, so, th- this says, you know, this says something a little stronger uh uh about that, and and so, and Bay State Kindred are already on board. And and then, and then it points out that they're a for-profit facility. Okay, uh, and that and that, and and that patients uh should not be turned away. Well, Bay State Kindred, I don't think is in the business of turning away patients. I think they're in the business of acquiring patients. So, I I just felt, you know, the council could disagree with me, but it did, I mean, the committee could disagree, I just felt. It it wasn't the right tone to send to what's gonna be a brand-new, or not a brand-new, but a a recurring corporate partner to the City of Holyoke that, by the way, is gonna. Uh, ta- take away a white whale and it's gonna pay taxes. Um. It it was, you know, I I didn't wanna, I I don't, it wasn't, it wasn't right to be amended. Um, I I just don't think it's the right order, so. Um, I I just don't think it's the right order, so I just said to to receive it. Um, if there's another committee that that wants to do a deeper dive into this, then then I'll vote to refer it back out to that committee, but that's as far as I wanna, I wanna take this uh this order. I I will not vote for this, whether it's as is or amended. Thank you.
Councilor Lacy.
Thank you, uh, as the maker of the order, I'd like to just say a few things. Um, I do also wanna recognize that Councilor Leahy signed on to this uh with me, and I do appreciate hi- his support. Um, you know, the contract was negotiated by the mayor, and the city council approved the the sale and contract. And, you know, it, the project is a done deal, and we're very happy to see it move forward. Um, and as I've been saying, you know, time and time again, the resolution is really an expression of our values and our sentiments, it's it's our voice. Um, and since we don't have the ability to negotiate the contract, and again, it's a closed deal, it's it's tied up, um, this is an opportunity for the city council to say that we recognize that um Bay State Kindred will likely need to, you know, close other facilities in the region, and that we hope that um, those members of, you know, the the entire region are given equitable, equitable access to care at this Hoyoke facility. Um, and then additionally, that, you know, this city council would like to see that employees um have quality working conditions in this new facility, uh, that they have, um, you know, living wages and um, you know, adequate benefits packages and the right to organize. And it's really, you know, it's, resolutions are never binding. Um, but they are an opportunity for this council to say, welcome to the city. We know you're coming, we we're glad you're here, these are just the the ways that we hope that you conduct yourself as a, as a, as a business member of our community. And and so I hope that um this council will vote in favor of the resolution this evening.
Anyone further?
Mr. President?
Councilor Graney.
There's no indication at all that I've ever heard over that we have evidence of that Bay State Kindred has ever done anything but the best thing that they could do for their employees. So I I don't think a resolution like this is is in our purview to get involved with. I think that's their business. What they do, our, our, our business was to sell the land to them, and that's it. So I'm gonna vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
So, currently before us is to receive. So, what do we look?
I would amend the the uh motion that we um receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt?
And and I do wanna, um, since, since I had the the ability to make the motion, I I just wanna reiterate again. This doesn't compel anybody to do anything. This is not about Bay State Kindred coming in and saying, this is what we're, we do, this is how we conduct ourselves, this is about the city council saying, this is what we want business to look like in our city. Thank you.
Was there a second?
I think.
You seem to remember this, I hear you, Councilor McGee.
What? I didn't read Councilor A. Alright, alright, Councilor Murphy.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I agree with the values, and I I also had hoped when we were going back for the second uh negotiation with Bay State, that some of these things would have been considered. I know the mayor stood out in front of the Geriatric Authority and talked about the concerns about closing the other facilities, uh, and and you know, I would have liked, and I voted for it only because, I mean, that it was the only offer that I had, and that was, I I do think uh the goal of the resolution, the the values that are recommended there are things I agree with. I'm not sure a resolution really does us any good. Uh, but, and I wish that, and and when we are in negotiations, I I I hope that we recognize that, you know, yeah, we we have a lot of authority, we're, we're, we're the major negotiator, and and that we would look to make the best decision. Now, in this case, obviously, we're getting a facility that's coming into Hoyoke, and we're gonna get taxes, and they did improve that situation with the taxes now being uh forever, uh, so I I would agree with that. Uh, and you know, I know they talked about allowing, you know, people to to unionize should they want to, but I think all the employees at the other facilities right now are all unionized. I'm not absolutely positive, but I'm pretty, pretty certain that they are. And that if they came to our facility right now, uh, they would be coming as new employees and not part of the union, but I could be wrong on that. But again, I think, I think uh Councilor Lacy's order, I I, the ideals of it, I I agree with. I just don't think it's gonna have an impact, and uh, you know, and I wish it had been done prior to uh, the final negotiated contract that we ended up accepting. Thank you.
Councilor Vacant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, during the committee meeting, I voiced my perspective that this is not within our purview. Um, this was in the mayor's purview relative to any deal or um, conditions of any deal. And we do not, in my experience, um, create resolutions like this with different business deals that we've made, or and particularly in a role where our role was to complete a sale of property. So I will not be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Councilor McGee.
I think I concur with a couple of speakers this evening, the uh, the values and the resolution um certainly speak for themselves, but unfortunately, you know, in a day and age of where where we lost uh similar beds to this, when Trinity closed down Providence Hospital, when we know that, you know, there are issues going on up in Greenfield, and we know that there is a demand for this, this type of facility, and we have a building that fits the needs of this demand with some renovations, some very expensive renovation, in a building that if we don't do something with it, we're gonna be footed with the cost of uh down the road demolishing it. I think a a resolution at this time, you know, even agreeing with some of the wording and values of the resolution, sends a mixed message to the the proposed developers that the city is dealing with. Uh, the Geriatric Authority side is not the only side that they looked at. And I don't think we should be sending a mixed message, so if we're gonna bring this to a full vote, I'll be voting no.
Anyone further? Hearing none, seeing none, motion was to receive. Who, who?
One.
Uh, Councilor Anderson Burgos, I didn't see, oh, there it is.
Although I understand, you know, I I get this. I get the order you filed, um, that was filed, rather, and and I get the meaning, but I also have to understand that, you know, as Councilor McGivern mentioned, that this is a business that's coming in, and we're setting a tone. And that tone should be more um deceptive. And this sounds, it's like it's more, uh, I'm gonna tell you what I want you to do. And and it's kind of, I don't know, it's it's kind of.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, it's not where I wanna go. You know, I've already voted to to sell the building over to to Bay State, so I'm unfortunately, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to say no, I don't wanna set that tone.
Right, seeing no one else, motion is to receive and adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye. Clerk, do you wanna call the roll on this?
Do I do a roll call?
Uh, why not?
That's one, two more?
Yep.
Yep.
Roll call.
Alright, hearing three members, roll call, clerk, the call, if you vote yes, you're voting for the resolution as it is.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Graney?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
No.
Sullivan?
No.
Toman?
No.
Vacant?
No.
Nine aces, three nays. Nine nays, three aces.
So that does not pass to nineteen E. Committee on DGNR, who was referred to special permit application um for one forty-five Mountain View Drive, uh, have considered the same, recommend that the application be approved with the following conditions, there be no signage, that all material be stored indoors, that the van be garage from seven PM to seven AM daily, uh commencing six months from the date of the permit issue, that there be no deliveries.
A motion to, motion to uh receive, adopt, the committee report, grant a special permits with with your four set conditions.
Motion is receive, adopt, uh, under discussion, Councilor Bartley.
Yeah, this, this is a, this was a, a uh, one of the fun things we do in 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 committee, well, fun for me anyhow, so it's a public hearing, and it was to, to, to meet, to meet, uh, to meet some, uh, some new Hoyokeers and uh and hear about a new, new business, so um really excited about it. Um, it it was a public hearing, we we did hear from the public, had, and the public had, had, had had important input on this. A- as we know, um, you know, Mountain View is up in Wyckoff, and and um and uh, so the the public really uh weighed in, and and they, I have to say, they're they're supportive of the business, uh, Mr. President, uh, but you know, they're, it's, it's, you know, it's a residential neighborhood, as, as, you know, we're all, you're pretty familiar with the with Wyckoff, right, and uh, and you are in particular, Mr. President. So, so uh, so I I would say, I I would say the the conditions, and and every counselor, uh, that was another thing, every counselor who was there at that meeting uh, he pitched in on this particular order, and and not committee members also, I mean, the ones that that come all the time and stay for the meeting, um, yeah, everybody, everybody leaned in, uh, and and really helped out. So, so what we have here is a um, is a, is a, is a painting, uh, painting company, interior designs, um, interior painting, and um, a new business, they're new to Hoyoke, they love the city, they 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 wanna start the business, and um, you you know, they don't really wanna have a storefront at this point, which is understandable, but but yet, yet they have an ongoing concern. And um, with the conditions that we laid out, the uh, the committee was uh, was uh, uh, and the applicant also, I always ask the applicant, Mr. President, are you, are you okay with these things before we, before we vote on them? And and the applicant green-lighted that, the abutters green-lighted it, and consequently, the the committee uh voted unanimously to approve. Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, and can I add one thing, Mr. President? The the permit i- is for, and and Councilor McGivern always points this out, and 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 that's why I say, it's just, it's almost like, you can't run meetings and and do all the stuff you gotta do, and you, because you forget parts, but Councilor McGivern rightly pointed out, hey, this is, this is a one-year deal, right? So, so, so the applicant's gonna, they're gonna have to come back around uh after the twenty-day window, and Madam Clerk will explain that, if 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 necessary. After the twenty days, you know, the twenty-day, um, Brenda, what's it called?
Appeal period.
Thank you, the twenty-day, thank you, Madam Clerk, the twenty-day appeal period, um, then there's gonna be a one-year uh renewal. And so, if there's a problem, um, and and the public said, well, you know, who do we go to, well, the, 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 the Board of Health, the um, Building Commissioner, you know, those are certain certain avenues uh through which the abutters can can get relief if if the, if the petitioner does not adhere to these, to these conditions. And uh, so with that said, um, but I'm assuming that they will, I'm sure that, I'm sure that they will, but uh, that said, there is, this is one year, and that's gonna come up again annually, so, um, so hopefully that'll, um, that explains it. Thank you.
Councilor Anderson Burgos.
Well, I wanna, I wanna, through the chair, I wanna thank Councilor Bartley for answering a question I was gonna ask, one of the questions I was gonna ask, I just wanted to make sure that the business was aware of the conditions, and they agreed to the conditions. Uh, secondly, I also wanna state that this business is actually a Hoyoke grown business, that uh one of the owners or the one that's running the business is actually from the city, and I love seeing this, I love growing within. Um, so this is good for the city, good for our people, and uh, I'm good to see this, I'm happy to see this happen. Thanks.
Councilor Toman.
Yeah, briefly, everything that was discussed, uh, as Chairman Bartley stated, uh, everybody chipped in on this. Um, and I I think this is a, is is great for this person to be able to work their business out of their home, and I was glad to see the neighbors uh come in and chip in and what their concerns were. Um, and I think it's gonna work out well for, for her uh in in this area, so, thank you.
Mr. President? Hold on, Councilor Graney, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, and I agree with the other work of the other committee, I I think the use of the conditions on a special permit are appropriate here and interesting at the same time. What we're, we're essentially granting is to allow a home occupation, we haven't done one of these special permits in a long time, meaning a person can operate out of their residential zoned um, home, property, a business. It's very restrictive, it's very, you know, concise to what they can and can't do, and the special conditions make that even more more concise, and and the, as Councilor Bartley said, the applicant agreed to all of them. One of the ones I found interesting is, because we're really just saying, you can use this as your business address, you wanna have a desk, you wanna tell the IRS, this is where your home office is, and yes, we understand that you may have some materials and stuff, but agree to no deliveries, agree to no one else's on the property. Uh, they do their work obviously off-site, so that's no problem. The van was the one that interested me the most, because van and commercial, commercial vehicles are regulated by law, and van, you know, anybody who lives, you know, can drive their commercial van home up to a certain size. And the, and the size of this van certainly is allowed to be driven home. But the applicant agreed, that, you know, for the purpose of the, the neighborhood and and the integrity of the residential neighborhood itself, that she would park the van in the garage overnight, which I think is a tribute that she will adhere by these uh conditions and work with this special permit. And hopefully someday, this business not just grown in oil, but will grow into a much bigger business that will need some rental property, or maybe even build ownership of a, of building uh somewhere else in the city where it's commercial zone.
Alright, so this one.
Councilor Graney wanna speak?
Oh, Councilor Graney, thank you, Councilor Riley, Councilor Graney.
Yeah, just quickly, the applicant was was very receptive to all conditions, and uh uh, the the neighbors that were there were very receptive uh to the business uh being what it is in the neighborhood, and uh, it was a very fruitful discussion, and uh I think that we should support efforts like this, because it can only improve our community. Thank you.
So with that, seeing no one else. Clerk, a call roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with the conditions that were read.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Toman?
Yes.
Vacant?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Wait, your vote, you approved the special permit. Nineteen F, the DGNR committee was referred to special permit application for driveway at the front of the house, facing the house at twenty-three O'Connor Ave.
Motion to receive, adopt, committee report, grant special permit.
Motion is to receive, adopt, under discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President, we, this, this is a um, uh, this is a word for uh address, uh, I I heard from the petitioner multiple times, really wanna credit Jeff again, uh, because Jeff really helped me kinda get, keep in touch with uh, with the petitioner, he did, he did a great job, um, in in terms of his uh, uh, or organizing this, and uh, so we, we, we had a public hearing, of course, um. I do not believe we had anyone from the public speak for or against, but we did speak to the petitioner. Essentially, thi- this is a, this is an ordinance that that kind of about frontal, about uh, front yard driveways, and and so the petitioner had to come before us, and and really what's happening here is the is the, uh, she lives with uh her, her mom, and it's, it's, it to get, for mom to get uh from the backyard driveway, it's, it's, it's quite a burden, I believe she says, four flights, thirty-two steps, as opposed to, you know, a third of that, I, that's, that's what my notes say, a third of that, or or less, um, with with the front yard dri- driveway. Um, the the other good news is for for the, for the neighborhood, uh, the petitioner said, look, thi- this is, this is a summertime project, and it's a one-day job. So the impacts on the abutters are um, other than one day, are gonna be de minimis, and and this is going to really help uh the petitioner, and and importantly, your mom, and consequently, the committee voted unanimously to uh grant the permit. Thank you.
Anyone further? Councilor McGivern.
Yeah, just, just to add, I think Councilor Bartley, the committee did a great job on this, a very unique set of circumstances. unique set of circumstances for a unique parcel of land. Uh, many years ago, Dick Welch represented Ward Four after, I actually represented Ward Four before Dick, and these, these streets that, they're both S terms where this property is, and these streets are at different elevations, and the backyard is different from the front yard. And, and the fact that the neighborhood did not come out in that position, I think makes sense that this should be granted for, not a hardship, but actually for a need of the property owners doing the right thing to come, uh, to come before us.
Seeing no one further, Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Greeney.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Leahy.
Yes.
Lisi.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Toman.
Yes.
Bacon.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the special permit.
Uh, Mr. President, can we take suspend and take nineteen G and nineteen H as a package, please?
All right, motions, spend rules, take up G and H as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? G is from the committee on D G N R who's referred nor that the D G N R committee meet with Hoyok Media about the possibility of having more programming on channel fifteen. Is possible to have the same regular half-hour programs which could both entertain and inform residents that's complied with. H is that the committee on D G N R who was referred nor that the committee meet with Hoyok Media, the mayor, health director, representatives of the opioid, uh, task force to present a five-to-ten-minute video to be televised on channel fifteen on the importance of a person not contributing to panhandlers, the emphasis should be on, that should be on the negative impact of doing so in terms of panhandling, rejecting offers that could be more significant to improve the quality of their lives. Once the program is completed, it should be sh- uh, just prior to the city council meetings on channel fifteen, comply, and that is complied with.
Uh, so, so the, the motion is to, uh, receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion is receive adopt under discussion.
Okay, uh, okay, Mr. President, this was towards the end of a four-hour thirty-five minute meeting that we had at chair, and, uh, you know, while I try to inject humor to at least entertain myself, I may entertain anybody else, I, I have four pages of notes on, on, on these orders. Clearly, we're not gonna review that, uh, all of that, but, but it was a, it was a positive discussion, councillor Murphy, these are great orders, we were great, I learned a lot, um, the, the, from my perspective, the, the, um, you know, th- there were, there were some, th- there, it was a good discussion wi- with, uh, Scott McPherson, executive director of Hoyok Media, um, a little bit of pushback in parts, um, you know, especially relative to, to the financing of some of these things. I, I, I think that's gotta be, I think that's gotta be, uh, embellished a little bit, I, I believe we heard from Mr. McPherson that he was going to, or he did send a financial report for Hoyok Media, but I looked at my computer and I, I don't, I don't have it, so, so I'm, I don't know if we need to file another order, or if he'll, if he'll just, uh, on his own send a communication to the, uh, to the city clerk for next meeting, because that, that topic was brought up a couple of times, uh, we, we did have, uh, Captain Moriarty and one of the narcotics detectives, uh, uh, be- before us, um, again, learn, learned a lot, you know, we had councillor McGivern there with his expertise a- as a, uh, as an assistant chief probation officer, we had, uh, um, well, like I said, just, just a really, really good discussion, but it was after a tremendously long meeting, so I'll, I'll turn it over, if I may, Mr. President, to, to the maker of the order, and, and if, as I comb through my notes, if I come up with something more salient, I will, but, uh, I, that's essentially it, thank you.
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, I, I wanna thank the committee, I appreciate it, uh, I, I've, and after, again, uh, it was suggested that I kinda meet with Scott again, and I've been meeting with Scott, and I've been meeting, uh, talking to and meeting with, uh, people that I would hope would be part of the ten-minute, uh, presentation. Uh, I've also talked, and we're also looking to try to see about programming, I mean, both of those cases, I don't think there is an expense, uh, so that we could do that, and we just have to coordinate things, and, and I'm still working with them to see if we can set something up in both cases, and the mayor has agreed to be, to be part of the, uh, ten-minute uh, video, I'm trying to talk to, uh, people at the opioid, opioid task force, I'm trying to talk to the veteran services. Uh, I wanna make it a positive statement of the kind of programs that Hoyok has available to help people, uh, and that the experts in all of those fields all, all believe that, uh, while we are well-intentioned trying to help by giving out money, uh, to people on the street, uh, we are in fact, just, just getting them in a position where they are rejecting the kind of services that can improve their quality of life, so, I'm still working on both of those, I'm hoping that, uh, you know, we will get at least one of those completed shortly, and, and another one, uh, not too far after that, and then as it goes along, I will keep, uh, the council updated.
Mr. President.
Councillor Green.
Yeah, I'm very much in support of, uh, this type of communication with our residents. Uh, with all the, uh, negative things that we see on anti-social media during the course of the week and course of the day, it will be very good to get some positive media uh, experiences out there for the, for the, for the people at Hoyok, and, uh, I think they'll very much appreciate it. As, uh, I will, as a senior citizen, a lot of us, uh, uh, rely on, uh, on, on the TV media much more so than the social media, or I should say anti-social media, uh, so, uh, this will be a very good thing, thank you.
Councillor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, uh, to councillor Murphy, thank you for the work you're doing and, and, uh, getting in touch with Hoyok Media and, uh, with the police department and trying to put something together, I think this is very informative, it's very, uh, a positive, uh, item that will be, really help the community in, in the long term, uh, with the situation that we're dealing with, so, thank you for putting that forward.
Thank you, councillor Tomlin.
Seeing no one else, motions for both are that they have been received and that they've been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nineteen I, the committee on D G N R who was referred, uh, in order that the law department find an update on the seat counts on the city's receivership program. This is a semi-amateur review, that that's been complied with.
Motion to receive adopt the committee report.
Motion is receive adopt under discussion.
Yeah, we, we had, uh, Mr. President, we had, um, uh, Attorney Barnes from the law department, uh, with us. I, I, I also, before I, we had not one, but two really, um, great articles posted i- in the paper on Mass Live, uh, uh, by Dennis, and I wanna thank Dennis publicly for that, I know he hates it when we do that, but I'm gonna do it anyhow, because there was, uh, um, it just, it just showing the public and the readers of those, uh, uh, of those, uh, of those letters, uh, that, um, that were, uh, that, that, and efforts being made, so, so Crystal uh, wa- walked us through what the receivership program is, you know, the president was there, councillor Leahy was there, councillor McGivern, councillor Tomlin, a lot of us were there, councillor Jordan, councillor Bresnan, myself, uh, went to, to, to start the receivership program. Uh, I, I always try to mention attorneys Wilson and Corchane for, for, for guiding us through the, the initial stages to, to create the receivership program, which is really based upon the Springfield model, and, um, and, um, you know, I have to credit attorney Konya for, for, for really kinda, you know, starting that down the road and, and, and then, uh, you know, Sarah, and then, uh, and then now, um, attorney Barnes for, and, and then, then the group for, for really kinda moving us along, and man, there's a, there's just a lot of properties, but, but the, the, the receiverships had a lot of wins as well, Mr. President, and, and sprinkled through frankly, all seven wards in the city. And, and, uh, so Crystal did send, uh, a report to us, um, I think for the December first meeting, but it might have been December fifteenth, I just can't remember, but I, it, it's just, it's just a, um, you know, it's a thirteen-page report, but it, 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 it's just really, it's photographs, and it kinda summarizes a- all, all the various properties that have been, man, th- there were just some real, you know, tigers by the tail that, that the receivers had to do, I, I, I'd be, I'd be unfair if I didn't point out how, how it's, the receivers are putting up his or her money, um, to do this, and you know, there's no guarantee they're gonna get it back, so a lot of them are flippers and they try to, you know, fix it and flip it, but a lot of them, because they can't, they, they have to buy and hold and, and rent and try to recoup their investment, and again, there's no guarantee, um, but these are all business people and um, you know, they, they know how the game works and, uh, you know, but because of their effort, and specifically because of the program and the good work by the judges in the western division of the housing court, which, you know, I know we're not always nice to judges, but in this case, you know, they're, they're sensitive to it, there, there's, it's, it's, it's hard to be a judge sometimes, and, or a lot of times, and, 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 uh, this is no, no exception, but when, when they can get the ball rolling with the receivership, it now helps the house, it helps, you know, the neighborhood and then the city, and ultimately, the, the taxpayer, um, uh, the, the taxpayer i- in whole gets the benefit, cause we, we've expanded our tax base. Uh, one final point, the receivership program, we've gotta notice, cause we hear this all the time, it's really for residential with, but very, very rare exception. So, commercial properties are kinda not really part of the game, it's really residential, and, um, so that, I just wanna point that out, and, uh, I'll answer any questions, but, uh, the committee voted, um, to, to receive this, and, uh, that was that, thank you.
Seeing no hands. Motion that's been, uh, to receive that's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? There was no charter and rules, there was no joint committee. To all the committees and everyone that was there and did the work, thank you very much, many, many hours went into, um, everything that we just went over, so I appreciate everyone and all your hard work, i- it, it doesn't go unnoticed, so, on to motions, orders and resolutions, twenty-two.
Uh, councillor President?
Yeah, councillor Leahy.
I'm just gonna link to, um, uh, remove myself from item number twenty-two.
Yeah, okay. Okay. From, uh, from councillor Lisi, Anderson Burgos, Hernandez and LeBron Martinez, order that the city council adopt a resolution opposing internet data caps and committing analyzing internet access in affordability, see attached.
Receive and adopt.
Motion is to receive and adopt under discussion, councillor Lisi.
Uh, thank you, so you see, um, councillor Anderson Burgos, Hernandez and LeBron Martinez have, um, all signed on as cosponsors, and I did, um, send the full text out to the full body to invite, um, cosponsors from anyone who'd be interested. Um, the data caps issue is a big issue for our Hoyok community. Um, basically, um, through the contract that Comcast has with the city of Hoyok, um, they have ineffective, um, monopoly on, um, uh, internet access. And, um, they have recently created a policy of, uh, data caps which limits users to one point two terabytes of data um, before they would be charged a fee for going over, um, and as you're well aware, um, families and seniors are all doing more and more things online, whether it's just basic, um, household tasks like banking or grocery shopping, or, um, you know, school, work, meetings, um, health appointments, whether it's, uh, medical or therapy appointments. Um, you know, people in Hoyok and, you know, across the country are doing more and more, um, online. And, um, what we have seen, and I, I put some, uh, references in the, in the resolution, um, that, uh, a lot of industry, um, you know, um, publications have declared the data caps, uh, arbitrary and financially motivated, because they have been um, applied and suspended, applied and suspended, and, um, recently, seventy-one state legislators wrote a note to Comcast about the data cap policy, um, saying that they felt it was, uh, untimely and that it would be, um, something that they would seek to regulate um, if they were to move forward on it, so dat- um, Comcast has thus, um, pushed the initiation of the data cap policy out to June, but I think, um, really, the, the thrust of the resolution is saying, um, you know, we, we don't like this policy for our residents, um, and that, uh, locally, you know, our Hoyok Gas and Electric is providing, uh, fiber internet option to uh, neighboring communities such as Chicopee and South Hadley, and we should have, um, some measure of consumer choice here in Hoyok. Um, without that consumer choice, um, our residents are, are really sort of, um, just vulnerable to any sort of policy changes that Comcast makes. And so, um, yeah, the, at the end of the resolution, it just says, we um, don't like the data cap policy, we urge our state, uh, delegation to consider regulating this if it moves forward, and we do understand that this is something that is regulated at a federal level, and so, um, you know, if we wanna send a copy of, of this, it should have passed to the, um, FCC.
Anyone further? Seeing no hand, uh, councillor Bacon.
So, thank you, Mr. President, I thought this would go to committee, um, to be discussed before acting on, but if we're gonna be pushed to vote on it tonight, I won't be supporting it, because I think there's more to the matter, and I think it's a matter of, it's outside of our jurisdiction and a matter of state and federal regulation, so I just don't see it in our purview, thank you.
Mr. President.
Uh, hold on, councillor Green, councillor Bartley, then councillor Greeney.
Yeah, I, 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 I would prefer to see, to go to a committee, you know, s- something other than what I, what I chair, cause I just wanted to give somebody else a shot at it, but I prefer to see to go to, you know, public, uh, safety, frankly, um, you know, I'm not gonna make the motion, because it's not my order, but, um, I, I did get some calls on this, and, you know, in general, I probably support it, but I, I guess I'd wanna hear from, you know, Comcast, at least maybe give them a chance to send a, a letter, uh, or just explain themselves if, if they so desire, now, if they don't desire, I mean, listen, it, it, we all know that with the the way the world works, uh, we're, you know, we're, we can't do this meeting without, um, you know, all the data that's running, you know, heaven knows, I don't understand e- uh, you know, any of it, but, um, uh, but I, you know, Comcast provides it, and, and, you know, I, I get the fact that they're monopoly, but what are we saying, we're, we're, we're biting the hand that feeds us. I mean, we, we just got through talking about Hoyok Media and all the thousands of dollars that they're, they're generating from, um, from Comcast for that entity, and now we've got four councillors that support this, and, you know, respectfully, um, w- with, without, without hearing from Comcast. I mean, I, yeah, I for one don't love huge corporations, I'm not, you know, giving them a big hug here, but I, I think it's only reasonable that they have a, a chance to, to respond, and if they don't respond, then, then they don't respond, i- i- you know, but we've got, I, I mean, at least three Hoyokers off the top of my head, but there's many, many more that work for Comcast. And, and I, I don't really feel like taking a vote to, um, against their employer, w- without giving their employer a chance to at least say something, so, if this is gonna go tonight, and I'm not making the motion to refer it, I don't really leave that to the makers. Uh, there's four makers, they, they, you know, obviously they reviewed all this, and reviewed all the arguments, and they've made up their mind, but you know, I haven't, so if it's before us, I'm gonna vote no, if it goes to committee, uh, you know, we can at least debate it and figure it out, thank you.
Councillor Greeney.
Yeah, this is something that I, I have no understanding of, this is the first time I've seen it, I haven't seen the other data or anything, I, you know, you know, a lot of this stuff is, uh, is, is brand new to me, uh, and, uh, I can't vote on something that I don't, I don't really know anything about, and I don't know anything about this. So I can't support it, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, councillor Anderson Burgos.
Well, I'm trying to collect my thoughts, because my mom always told me, you stand up to a bully. You don't let a bully push you around. And I am pretty sure that every single one of us in these squares and even outside of these squares through our community and everywhere else there's Comcast, if I was paid a dollar for the amount of times I had to call Comcast, I would be rich, there's one. They always fight you on everything, they're always raising up their, their, their rates on you. Even now, they promised me this, this bill is not gonna move, it's just gonna stay the same. It went up eight dollars, and then they say taxes, I'm like, you promised me it was gonna stay the same. I'm paying two hundred and twenty dollars for a service. For a service, not, if I can even call it that, I can't even tell you the amount of times that our services get cut off, it's poor service. If this cap goes through, if you think that our complaining now is bad, it's gonna get worse, and every single one of you in this, in these squares will be with me arguing with Will be with me arguing with this company. My mother told me to stand up to a bully. Comcast is that bully. I am sorry. But I'm not gonna stand there and let them benefit from a pandemic to a community that we all serve. We have to stand up against them. We are the ones that get elected to do such. I don't need to do any more research because I have already done. I already know what they're doing. Do your research, but I'm telling you right now. The people of this community elected us to do the right thing. To stand up against a corporation that has been suffocating us. Financially, taking our money, our money. And I can't even say for quality service. Because every time I call them, I'm on hold before I get to talk to someone for fifteen minutes. I'm sorry, but if I'm going to be paying two hundred over two hundred dollars for a service that I hardly get to enjoy. Because I work two jobs, then I shouldn't be holding on twenty minutes and nor should anybody else that is watching tonight. This is enough. I'm sorry, but if you don't understand that, then I don't know what to tell you. And I'm sorry that I I I generally don't like sounding aggressive because sometimes you lose the message. But the message is clearly this. Stand up against bullying.
Counselor Hernandez.
Thank you, um Counselor uh Ch- Mister President. And what I want to say is that um. I. Signed up on this um resolution. Because I saw the advantage that this big corporation um is taking during this pandemic. Well, they were taking advantage before the pandemic, but now during the pandemic in which the most vulnerable. People of our community are children. That are in school, that are doing remote learning, okay? Parents at home working, like Counselor Lisi said, we're on the computers. Virtual appointments for our children. And now they want to come and say that we're we're using too much data and they want to put these caps. On a community that's already strapped economically, okay? Um I think that that's a big abuse and um there wasn't that much research that had to be done to identify that. So that is why I'm supporting this. I represent my ward and the. Overall community of Holyoke and is disbenefiting us. We should have also a choice. It should be competitive that they. Comcast. Actually competes for our business. We don't have another choice here. For years and years, they have been hiking up prices. We don't have a choice to go with anyone else. And if Holyoke Gas and Electric is serving other towns, why can't they serve us? It is preposterous and we should do something about it. Thank you.
Counselor Lisi.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to um note for the record a couple of things. Um so first of all, um. Again, it's a resolution. It's, you know, uh it's sending a message to our state lawmakers and to the um FCC. Should we send, you know, pass and send it there? Um that these, this is how we feel about this issue. And you know, the seventy-one Massachusetts state lawmakers legislators. Who sent a letter to Comcast on the thirty-first of December, um you know, they recognized it wasn't within their purview either, but. They sent a message collectively and it moved the needle. I mean, the the data cap policy was supposed to begin this month and they have delayed it to. Uh June. A delay is not a solution though. Uh additionally, I want to note that the resolution um with the way that I wrote it, I I um understood that this would be new territory. For a lot of people and I put a lot of um doc- like citations and documented um. You know, and notes in the resolution so that if there was a question as to like, you know, what was this all about, there was a article that could be accessed directly from. The resolution, you know, it was a direct link to articles and documentation of about where the the information was coming from. Um so I mean, there there there's an opportunity to, you know, learn and and grow here. I mean. It the data caps is one issue, consumer choice is another issue, and then finally. Um you know, the the GNE is really a an opportunity. There's an opportunity here for the GNE to expand service uh locally and to. Really provide Holyokers with the same access that our neighbors are getting from the GNE. You know, like i- in some ways, we're being put at a um competitive disadvantage. With other um neighboring communities because they're able to access the wholesale service that um we are not presently able to access. Anyhow, um I I do hope that we could pass this on the floor tonight. Uh again, there's there's a lot of documentation in the resolution and the way that that I wrote it. Um and I I can answer questions as as they come up.
Anyone further? Seeing none, the motion was to receive and adopt the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'd say the ayes have it. If there's a question, we can always show our hands.
Show of hands.
Show of hands. If you're voting, raise your hand in support of the resolution. One, two, three, four, five. I'm six, so one, two, three, four, five, six, six.
Libby is seven, you're seven.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so yeah, so show hands again just so I can make sure. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Alright, there's a seven. So that would be adopted.
Thank you, everyone.
Counselor Leahy would abstain from that, just saying, so that's for the record. Twenty-three. Is from myself, from Counselor McGee, or that the DPW report. Before the Public Safety Committee to address the City Council, the back chamber area. Uh mainly addressing the upgrades and fixing the odor associated with the area. Motion would be receive, refer to public safety, a copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those twenty-five is from Counselor McGee, or that the City Council. Call or have an executive session to invite in the legal department to get an update on cases. We like that before the next full City Council meeting or before Finance Committee meeting. I know there are some orders in finance for. Uh monies for cases, so. How would you like it? Just so we can schedule it and make sure the timing's correct.
What do you need? Receive and adopt and schedule before the next City Council meeting?
Want to do it? Yep. Well, I want to make sure that's what you want to do.
Well.
Okay, so.
Motion.
What are the finance meeting?
When's the next finance, Counselor McGivern? Monday?
We have one scheduled for Monday. It's not depending on a couple of invited guests that they can or can't come. Not the biggest agenda.
Not the biggest or?
Not the biggest.
And that's at six thirty?
Uh yes, traditional.
Yep, so. We could have some before that if people want or before this full City Council meeting.
We we can delay the uh finance at seven if you want to do that.
Want to do that? So do six executive session, seven o'clock finance for Monday? Sounds good.
If if I can ask a a procedural question, uh how do you do executive session with Zoom?
Well, I I was gonna get that with Crystal Lamarr and try and figure that out. I I think it's probably it's just not, it you can't broadcast it.
Yeah, no.
It has to just be us on Zoom, not recorded, but I'll have Crystal confirm that with us um.
Invite only waiting room, so people just, you know, don't have the ability to enter until they're they're let in. I think that's the safest way.
And then go live for. Uh the Finance Committee.
Yeah, but but we do have to open in live session for executive.
I know, but then we'd have to.
Then we have to go in, you know.
Right.
Something.
Well, well, that that's a, we'll figure that out.
For Jeffrey's purposes, we'll need two Zoom links. You'll have one that's live and they can let anybody in and then we'll have a private one that doesn't get posted. But we'll get emailed to the city counselors.
Thank you.
And so we'll basically leave one running, disappear to the other one and then come back.
Alright, so that would be the eighth, Counselor McGivern?
Yes, uh then Jeff, if you're listening, we'll just, once uh Counselor McGee sets that meeting, we'll just do finance at seven. Understood.
Alright, so motion is receive, adopt, have an executive session for Monday, the eighth at six P M. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-six, twenty-seven, you want to take up as a package?
So moved.
Motion to spend rules, take up twenty-six and twenty-seven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, twenty-six is that uh we appropriate uh seven thou- or not appropriate, but transfer seven thousand one hundred forty fourteen dollars and sixty cents. From reference library assistant to reference library assistant. So one's from night, the other one's a regular assistant. Twenty-seven.
Finance.
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Twenty-seven. Is appropriate thirteen thousand nine twenty-seven thirty-nine. Same thing to library assistants and reference assistants, both to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-eight is from Counselor McGee, Counselor Lisi, uh that. Uh with the reconvening and the review process and discussion of the middle school project, the Joint Committee on City Council and Schools meet with. And invite the mayor, school department receiver, treasurer, members of the city finance team and members of the community review. The feasibility study and the MSBA financing and collect the necessary data requested by the MSBA in order to better assess the projects or proposals. Counselor Murphy, you wanted to be added to this one?
Yes.
Can I ask to be added to uh Counselor President?
Adding Counselor Leahy. And this would be to just receive the refer the joint committee. All those in favor?
Just a a quick reminder, Mister President.
Yep.
That we get good notification of this meeting. We've had some issues there in the past.
Yeah, it falls under our purview this year. It's a it's on the City Council side for notice and everything. The prior year was under School Committee and there was a little hiccups here and there, so we will get the notice through Jeffrey as we normally do.
Thank you.
Alright, so that's the joint committee. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, uh a couple of late files are remaining. We'll get through those. A is from uh our city auditor. Is the general fund in sewer enterprise budget report to finance.
Motion to finance.
Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We did B, that was from Counselor Leahy and Grady. C is from Counselor Lisi, order that the City Council create a revolving fund to be set up for the city's municipal. Uh rideshare fund received.
Finance.
This is the finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, D. Is from Counselor McGee, or that the City Council invite in Jennifer Howard or other members of DCR to discuss Mount Tom. Send that to. Wherever you want, DJNR.
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 Those in favor?
I'm not in favor, so I'm gonna know.
And so that's the DJNR. E is from Counselor Bacon and Counselor Grady, order that the order review accounts to find. Uh any available funds and departments that are available for transfers to DPW for snow removal. Did I write that down correctly, Counselor?
Yes, thanks.
Alright, so that one will be to receive and refer to finance.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mister President. Send me a letter to the auditor with that.
And a copy to the auditor.
Yeah.
I'd be added to that with the authors make uh.
Sure, thanks, Jim.
Alright, so adding Counselor Leahy, but that this is going to be received to finance with a copy to the auditor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is it. We are caught up. Motion to adjourn, everyone.
Have a great night, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night.